You guys ready?
We are, yes sir.
All right, we'll call the the first item for the committee of the whole meeting to order, first item being one, a the budget workshop. Ms. Huggins, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank you trustees for being here today for our third budget workshop. I want to really commend staff on their work, their collaborative work, particularly the chiefs around the table, Mr. Brody, Ms. Simmons, Mr. Brigham, Ms. Denny, and Mr. Prentice for their work over the last several weeks preparing for the FY25 budget. It's been quite a time together and we're excited to be back today to present some more details to you about the planning process, where we think we are as far as teacher raises, weighted student funding, classified employee raises, and talk to you about a three-year forecast as well today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Prentice and again, thank him for his impeccable leadership in just two short weeks here on the job. Mr. Prentice.
All right, thank you. And Maggie, are you at a point where you can key up the presentation or I don't want to? Sorry, I know you're, I know you're dealing with a number of things back there. Thank you. There we go. All right, so start this out, giving an update on revenues. You've seen this template before, looking at the fiscal 2024 board-approved budget compared to 2024 year-end projected revenues, which ties to the February 29th financial statements report that was provided at Audit and Finance Committee that we'll share later this evening during the committee of the whole. But our projected year-end revenues in the GOF are 737.2 million, which is $34.9 million over the base budget that was approved by the board. The primary source of that variance is in local sources, 33.3 million of it arrived from that. And I will share some more information later in this presentation about where some of those increases are coming from. We've also seen a small variance from the state and federal sources and transfers to make up that total, which is about 4.97% over budget. If you flip to slide three, there we go, comparing this to fiscal '24 projected year-end, which ties to what's on the last slide, to our fiscal 2025 base budget estimate. We're looking at $29.7 million in additional local revenues and then $9.3 million in additional state revenues. Those are the two major categories that we're seeing substantial increases in for a total of additional $34.1 million in the fiscal 2025 base budget over this fiscal year's projected year-end. And if you'll go to the next slide, to slide four, oops, back one more. There we go. So this just looks at the base budget for this year as approved by the board compared to next year's projected revenues. So all in, we're looking at $67.6 million in additional revenue. Majority of that is coming from local sources, as that's where we saw the most substantial growth this year and where we're projecting additional growth next year, but all in from base budget to base budget, 9.6% overall increase. And then go ahead and go to the next one. So just a overview in terms of the categorical percentages of where the revenue comes from. Largest, of course, is 64%, 64.7% coming from local property taxes and other local sources, 33.1% coming from the state and just a small amount, 2.1% coming from transfers. Those are the only sources that register with a percentage of the budget on the pie chart there. Go ahead and go to the next one. So again, we're projecting that $67.6 million in revenue growth over this fiscal year's budget. We're also adding a proposed use of $20 million in Esser Sustainability Funds, and I'll show that on a future slide in terms of how we're breaking that down. But that would grow our overall revenue capacity to $87.6 million. I do caution at this point in the process, while we've gotten these numbers significantly refined, and we're still going through some additional refinement as we look to the end of this fiscal year. In particular, we're waiting on the TIP assessments from the county auditors, excuse me, from the county treasurer's office, as well as some additional growth updates to settle on our final numbers. And then at the state level, the numbers that you see in there from the House version of the budget, we understand that the Senate version of the budget has some changes, particularly a reduction in the state aided classrooms component, but also a component of potentially covering the cost of retirement increase, which may offset that reduction on the other side. So we're leaving those numbers where they are right now, but once we get some more information at the state level, we'll make those adjustments, but I wouldn't imagine that it would be material to the overall budget picture, plus or minus a million dollars in total sum, once we see which version of the scenarios they're going to move forward with. So if you go to the next slide. So of the $34 million in growth over this fiscal year's projected year-end, I wanted to break down where those sources are coming from. In particular, property transfers that have happened in the county over the last year. There's a name for those ATIs or assessable transfers of interest. There were over 7, 7,500 property transfers that occurred in Charleston County in the last year. And those properties, you know, when they sold at a higher value than what they were currently on the tax roll at, resulted in additional $9.3 million in revenue to the GOF based on our current millage levy. Additionally, new construction assessments, so new construction that was placed in service or issued a certificate of occupancy in the county accounts for $8.7 million in that revenue. And then we also included in our assumptions a three mil swap from the debt fund that we've referenced previously, which would reduce the debt millage levy by three mils and transfer that millage over to the GOF, keeping our total millage levy the same, but that would increase revenue to the GOF by $10 million. And we only have that capacity due to the ability to refinance existing debt outstanding at a lower interest rate and decrease our overall cost of borrowing over the next several years, which reduces the need for that millage, especially as our tax base has grown in the same time. We go to the next slide. So just kind of a summary here to round out some of the revenues. I wanted to share the long-range projection for what we're looking to do with the Esser Sustainability Funds that were set aside. I want to really note that those funds are not part of our fund balance calculation. They've been sitting in a separate restricted category across all of the GOF dollars that the board has allocated over the years. A lot of it's been accrued through savings in the budget. But $37.8 million is intended to offset the implementation of the WSF. And so what we're looking to do, if you look at the chart down there, the WSF has budgeted $32.8 million for fiscal year 2025, and we're proposing to use $20 million of those Esser Sustainability Funds to require only a net transfer from the GOF of $12.8 million to implement it. And then in fiscal '26, when we see reassessment come into effect, we're decreasing that appropriation of Esser Sustainability Funds down to 10 million, and then in fiscal '27, down to 7.8 million. So the goal being that over the next three years, the GOF can pick up the implementation of the WSF without requiring a tax increase to allow us to make that a sustainable implementation. And I'll share at the latter end of this presentation, a long-range forecast through fiscal year 2028 that reflects all of that information added together to show how we're able to balance the budget in each of those years using a mixture of revenue growth, fund balance above the policy, and Esser Sustainability Funds to be able to make this whole picture function. So you go to the next slide. There we go. So what we're going to show you this evening is a balanced budget. It includes a number of different components from the overall philosophy that we've talked about over the last month or so. And all scenarios that are selected in this balanced budget cost approximately $110 million. So we're balancing with a preliminary use of non-Esser Sustainability Fund balance. So fund balance that we've accrued over the board-approved policy, which is over the state-required policy to be able to present a no-tax-increase-based scenario. And then we've also provided some additional scenarios that the board may wish to consider, particularly with respect to compensation, and associated those dollars with it as well and some kind of round-out scenarios at the end. We go on to the next slide. So a lot of these charts you've seen before. This is the required increases, totals 22.7 million. This is all included in the base budget. As I mentioned, there is a possibility that we see some revenue come in from the state with the health insurance increases being covered on the Senate version of the budget, but we're not exactly sure what that's going to look like yet. Now, let's see, we lost the presentation, so I'm going to give a second there for you to get that back up. There we go. So all of those things are included. If you go on to the next slide. So the teacher salary increase of $5,000 plus fringe totaling $24.1 million. That's the scenario that's included in the base budget for the purposes of balancing. So that's included in this base budget that you'll see at the end of the presentation as well. Go ahead and move to the next slide. And then for non-teacher salary increase considerations, we included in the base a 99% of market, which equates to 5% COLA plus fringe, and then non-teacher step, as well as increasing the step from step 31, which was, was in the budget this year for non-teachers to step 33 and the associated fringe, as well as the school-based positions and the TA position upgrades that HR is reviewing and reviewing at this point in time. So all of that totals 19.6 million, and again, all of that's included in the base proposal as well. Going to the next. All of the school support considerations that you've seen previously, all of those are included. Just won't get into those with any particular detail, but those all remain the same. Going to the next slide. All of the human resources considerations that you've seen previously, the substitute increases, there's already an allocation for that this year based on our actual experience. That trues that up with an additional one and a half million dollars for teachers and teachers' assistance, the leadership pipeline, and then the alternative certification pathways program in HR, all for a total of 3.3 million. Going to the next slide. In financial services, some structural adjustments that the board will see later, as well as the Esser closeout. Y'all know the Esser program funding in September 30th. And so the staff that is essentially overseeing that closeout, this covers portion of their salaries through the end of the fiscal year, so that we can effectively close out the Esser program and make sure that we have those folks on board to see it to the end, since they're not just going to immediately be done on September 30th. Going to the next slide. The CertUp CD Head Start considerations, all the same from previous for $6.2 million. That's all in the base. Going to the next. And then learning services considerations totaling $2.8 million. These are some new additions that we've detailed. We've presented these at Audit and Finance prior week, so I don't know if there's any explanation that we want to go into at this level. Turn it over to Ms. Huggins or Ms. Simmons potentially to detail those.
Thank you, Mr. Prentice. My expansions equal 2.8. They are a fraction of what we requested. But nevertheless, student support services and wraparound services, including mental health, social workers, that's been a big part of our recovery effort post-pandemic. And so we do not want to see the services that students have been able to receive fall through the wayside. So this has been a big ask for us, and we got it down to 750. We also talked at Audit and Finance about a welcome center for our multilingual learner population. And the fact that when families and scholars enter our country, we want to provide that type of care, that they have an orientation, they have someone in particular studying their transcripts, and they have the benefit of knowing exactly where they should be housed when they enter our system. We always have a level of expansions for special education in the Department of Exceptional Children, as well as the support we've been providing for the last three, four years in terms of virtual programming. The virtual school was popular during the pandemic, but there have been families who've decided that's the best route for their entire family, and we want to be able to provide that versus outsourcing. And so this is the complement or package from learning services for this fiscal year.
Thank you for that, Ms. Simmons. Maggie, we'll go on to the next slide and briefly overview the weighted student funding investment. Did you have a question, Ms. Roberson?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Prentice, maybe this is for Ms. Simmons. In order for me to keep up with everything, I had the Audit and Finance presentation side by side with today's. There's, and are we going to talk about this later? There's something different with this deck.
You can, you can go ahead and ask. We can, we can, we can answer the interventionist.
Literacy coaches.
The literacy, the, the inner, the literacy interventionist.
Climate coaches.
Climate coaches would be a part of student support services, wraparound services. That's packaged there, but we didn't denote everything that wraparound services will account for. So Lisa Allison prepared, based on what we were stepping out of Esser. She prepared a request, a proposal. We were not able to satisfy the entirety of it, so she's been working with her team to kind of downsize, if you will. So I want to be honest with you, we will not be able to keep all of the staff necessarily that we've had for the last few years, but between resignations, the expansions that we have approved for student support services, we will be able to support many of the positions tonight. During your special call meeting, you'll get more details about those positions. Is that what you're asking, Ms. Roberson? I'm not sure.
But, but it is, and I guess my concern, and we can talk about it later. But what I want to make sure is this is side by side, this is a substantial decrease. And when I look at school renewal plans, I see folks are counting on those positions. So I just want to make sure that it's not, not in this budget.
So, so a couple of things are at play. We're backing out of Esser. We've made expansions to compensate for that, and then we have schools planning for the weighted student funding formula. So whereas some of the positions aren't going to be supported necessarily directly in this expansion, we have heard from particular schools who are requesting to maintain their social worker or their mental health therapists or their psychologist or what have you. And so it'll all come together, I think, for you as we go throughout the day.
Okay. No, there was a line item, Mrs. Roberson, in the expansion request for learning services that we presented last Tuesday that has been removed here. So the bottom line, the bottom number is, is, is decreased because the literacy coaches/interventionists that were in the original presentation in Audit and Finance have been removed because this, we, when we received clarification from the state, the state let us know that there was no requirement to transition the interventionist to certified all in the coming year, and so we were able to back that out of this year's budget. So that explains, I think, the line, the, the, the bottom line decrease in the number, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
I'm not looking at the side-by-side one, but I'll try to, I'll pull it up so that I can help try to pull, point those things out as we go through, because we have made some changes. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for pointing that out. Very quickly on slide 18, you'll see here a breakdown of how the weighted student formula plays out, student group by student group, as far as the pupils that we're trying to serve who are most needy, those that we've identified across our system, pupils in poverty. The line item amount is almost $21 million. 20,000 pupils in poverty across the system, nearly 21,000. About 6,400 multilingual learners and about 5,000 students with disabilities. You'll see that equals a $32.8 million ask in regards to the weighted student formula. There were Esser projects that met the Esser threshold. We talked a little bit about the cutoff score of 65 at the central office and 70 for schools. And this week, I think I forwarded to you all a comprehensive list of those so that you could review them on your own. We're happy to answer any questions you might have about those. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that we developed a project management framework to implement the WSF moving forward after, actually, the committee of the whole back in March. After we originally presented this to you, we immediately put together a framework and started working through it with our principals and our central staff. It's our, our guide to sort of help us manage the whole project, and we're having budget meetings with schools to review how they intend to use their monies. In fact, most of those meetings have now finished. If you go to the next slide, you'll see here something we reviewed at Audit and Finance. I'm not sure what that big mark there is in the middle of that, Maggie, but it looks really strange. It looks, it looks really strange, but you'll see on one side, if you can see in Board Docs, it doesn't show up in Board Docs, that initiation of the program was forming this project team and establishing our groups, planning around resource management, including our contract review meetings with various stakeholder groups, the execution of the WSF, which we hope will ensure our success. The performance control here being scoped with the project plan to make sure the guardrails are in place, and we'll review those very, very briefly since you've been exposed to those. And part of that performance control is the establishment of a way to manage and assess the effectiveness of the WSF, both at the school level and as a system. We're working very closely through that now and then closing out the program after year one and assuming the, the, the success of it. Going on to the next slide, you'll see how that breaks down from each phase, initiation, planning, execution, performance control, and closure, beginning with the background research, which started with a group of principals back prior, quite frankly, in December, prior to the holiday break. Then we drafted and released a funding formula, guidelines, a way to submit and have your projects approved at the school-based level. We have established this core project implementation team and now are conducting the needs assessment and approving all submissions. To the next slide, Maggie, you'll see here our plans to, we started in March with the training plan, communicating, working through all the financial pieces, and Munus, which I know all of you love so much, thinking through our workflow with, between HR and the finance team and working on these guardrails. The biggest piece we have left from our perspective is this progress monitoring system, which you'll see a B and C one back, Maggie, there you go. With the create, creating the progress monitoring system and the evaluation success metrics, we're working with some partners to help with that. You can rest assured, though, that our success will be measured against student outcomes. Establishing progress evaluation review teams and hosting these metric reviews with principals as needed to ensure that the system as a whole is aligned. We'll define our impact reporting needs as we move forward and approve these, the budget update reports and keep you, of course, engaged throughout the process. On the next two slides, very quickly, you'll see how you may and may not, for the public that might be viewing now, how WSF may not be used. And many of our stakeholder groups, stakeholders express concerns that if we didn't have tight guidelines and guidance around this process, that the monies might go to certain things that might not directly impact the student groups to which they're intended. So we develop these guardrails with principal input. WSF may not be used, of course, to play, pay for capital, maintenance, construction, grounds, more than one administrative personnel position, out-of-state conferences and PD retreats, faculty travel, faculty rewards, contracts with non-authorized partners, and IT on both devices and software that could be unrelated to student outcomes. When principals want to use software, that has to be vetted through their associate superintendent and the chief academic officer, Mrs. Simmons, and approved by the chief operating officer, who manages some of those projects and, and me. Funds may, conversely, on the next slide, Maggie, be used for teachers, associate teachers, student help needs. You'll see a list of things there, follow-up support for chronic truancy, chronic absenteeism, school psychologist, student concern specialist, enrichment, travel for students, extended day, student internships, et cetera. Onto the next slide, you'll see local PD is included here, parenting programs, student uniforms, materials, extra duty, extra pay, academic acceleration programs, whether that be during the summer or extended day. So lots of things the monies can be used for, but also very clear guidelines around how schools may not use them to, to, to think about how they're going to staff. You'll see on slide 26, before I turn it back over to Mr. Prentice, that in executive session tonight with you, we will discuss a reduction of approximately five and a half million dollars worth of services. And Mr. Prentice will go a little bit more in-depth about the two and a half now of pooling initiatives that he discussed briefly at Audit and Finance. Mr. Prentice.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So the rest of our strategic cuts are going to be addressed ideally through some risk pooling initiatives. Determine where we have areas where we've had traditional savings year over year and looking to establish a pool of sorts that can be administered by the superintendent's office and the CFO to address, you know, unanticipated needs that may come up without padding individual budgets throughout different departments in the system so that we can be responsive and fund things without having to establish funding in all the different divisions that exist unnecessarily. So overall goal of reducing $8 million is coming into focus nicely. We're just working on that last little piece as we go between now and first reading. So if you go to the next slide. So this is the overall expenditure comparison, looking at the FY2024 projected year-end compared to the FY25 proposed budget, which includes all of those scenarios that we've just discussed. So the FY24 projected year-end expenditures of $711 million. That is an under expenditure of the total board-approved budget. And then net of our revenues that we're anticipating to collect by the end of fiscal '24 would bring us a variance of $25.6 million, a positive variance. When you look at the overall year-end picture, we are estimating to increase fund balance by roughly $29.5 million. So our goal for the FY25 budget is to balance on no more than $29.5 million. And I'll share that in a future slide when we look at the overall long-range plan. But the goal is to balance the budget with no more than the fund balance that we've accrued and a positive variance at the end of this year to create a measure that's sustainable and also recognizes the board-approved fund balance policy. So when you look to the FY25 proposed budget of $827 million, of course, as you might expect, the most substantial increase is in salaries and fringe, $72.4 million, which includes categorically all of those things that we've just discussed. As you go down through those categories, one thing to point out, which is a one-time anomaly, is the transfers has increased by $36.6 million. And what that is, is the implementation of the WSF, moving that from the GOF over to the new WSF fund that was outlined in the technical guidance for creating the WSF. That has to move out of the GOF and over into that fund. The difference in that number and the WSF number is the increases in charter school payments as calculated based on the revenues that we collect and the prorate allocations that we have to establish to be able to make those transfers and payments to the charter schools.
There's a difference in membership dues.
Yes, ma'am, and the, their pupil allocations, I actually just got an email about that this morning. So we're starting to, they were done earlier in the spring before I got here, and then we're going to true those up as part of the final budget package to make sure we have those numbers correct based upon the, the attendance per pupil metrics and everything that are in that policy.
Can I, can I, thank you for that. So I'm just doing side by side. Let's go back to a couple of slides, just so you don't have to change the presentation. The hot wash, when are you going to do the hot wash?
So.
For the project management framework, the last, the, the closure talks about the hot wash. And I only asked that because we did the Esser impact on the back end instead of the front end. And now we're looking at it. So when are we going to start hot washing?
So if you look at the following slides, one of the big things that has to be done before July 31st is to fully define those impact reporting needs. And so the goal would be to have at least three full quarters of representative data in fiscal '25 for WSF to be able to kind of interim evaluate those metrics and then also to look at the whole year-end as, you know, as a process in general. But I think there will probably be kind of two points of concern there to your question. But I think there'll probably be kind of two points of, of concern there to your question. We're definitely going to hot wash the overall implementation process to make sure that we've got a good plan in place going into future years and make sure that the, the team comes together. We're coming together as soon as Wednesday to have an interim checkpoint, touch point, if you will, with HR and finance on all the things that we've been working on with contract issuance. So there's lots of little interim steps along the way. And then I would imagine at the end of the year, a major hot wash on the overall program and the reporting out of the board of the year-end data.
I have a question. You're using a term that I've never heard. What do you mean by hot wash?
Well, that might've transferred over from my county days. But we always, whenever we would enter an emergency event like a hurricane or something like that, a- as a term to debrief the overall process. You know, after the event's completely over with, just going over everything that we did right, everything that we did wrong, where we had opportunities for improvement. So that when we can be in together as a group to go through that same process again, we could learn from all of our strengths and weaknesses to be able to make it better and better as we continued into the future. So that was a, a, a technical term from that process that I think I stuck into the slide. And Mr. Burrow is looking at me like he wants to give a more detailed description.
We've learned a lot from Mr. Burrowe and Mr. Prentice with all their terms, their widgets.
I told you to get a ledger.
What, one question, what the, and thank you for pointing it out, the reduction in, in membership, what, what are we bringing out of, getting out of, removing from that list?
Let me go back over to that slide.
I mean, it's a.
Be very good question. This memberships and dues, when it rolls up in the system, also includes some subsets of purchased services that are more supply-based. And that is a result of the Esser, if you remember the Esser procurement issue that came up earlier this fiscal year, where the non-approved Esser items had to be journaled over into the GOF, that's those amounts. So that's, if you look at that as FY 24 projected year end, that year end is coming in substantially over what our normal experience has been. So next year's base budget removes all of those expenditures that are not going to be normal and ordinary.
So two six would have been the budgeted amount for this year, even though it's not the actuals.
Close, yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Good question. Just so, and I, and I will, to Mr. Roberson's earlier question, at Audit and Finance, I had the FY 24 budgeted expenditures. I was still going through all of the year-end refinements to put in the year-end projection. So I did update this to show this is an FY 24 projected year end versus just the FY 24 budget as we refined all of those things over the last week. So that has changed just so slightly in that one column. The FY 25 proposed budget numbers are the same from the committee. So the variance has changed as a result. To Mr. Kelly, to your point, the budget was in there originally at the Audit and Finance level, and then we increased it to the actual projected experience. So if we go to the next slide. So just categorically breaking down the expenditure profile in the GOF. Salaries in fringe, of course, are the largest piece of the pie, 61, 68.1%. And then again, transfers of 14.3%, including the implementation of the WSF increases that wedge over normal historical experience. And then unique to CCSD with transportation services, custodial services, certain subsets of security being contracted, that falls to the purchase services line item versus the salaries in fringe line, just to show you the overall breakdown of where the dollars are being allocated. One of the next slide. So as we requested, we put together a few scenarios to show what the cost and representative millage increase would be in the event there was a desire to go above and beyond what's in the base budget. Right now is $5,000 teacher pay increase and a 99% of market, as I mentioned earlier, for classified staff. So you can see that $7,500 total, which would be 2,500 over the 5,000 that's already in there, would cost just over 12 million dollars, which is representative 3.7 mils. Going full, all the way to $10,000, which is double what's currently in the budget, would be additional 24.1 million dollars or 7.3 mils. So either one of those scenarios for teacher pay. And then for classified staff going to 100% of market would be roughly 3.6 million or 1.1 mil. And I've included some additional slides. I don't know, go ahead and go into those and then we can take questions after I go through all of the data regarding millage and additional considerations. But I wanted to include for the board, just kind of a simplified millage calculator as it pertains to the law and the way that, that millage is levied. To show, you know, for example, a $300,000 property at the 6% assessment ratio, which is the ratio that's applicable to revenues in the GOF since 4% are excluded under Act 388. And what the value of one mil would do to a property tax bill for that value of property. And generally, just to show that when you hear millage described, it's one mil is equal to $1 of revenue for every thousand dollars in assessed value. And so for $18,000 of assessed value is an $18 increase in property taxes for every one mil levied. And then of course, just based on the calculation, you can only levy mils to the 10th. You can only go out one decimal place in terms of that calculation. So I will, you know, always round to the nearest 10th whenever making those calculations on the former slide. Also wanted to show the board a comparison within our region, if you'll go to the next slide. Between Charleston, Berkeley and Dorchester counties, just to give you an idea of where things stand at this current moment with the approved levies. DD2 down at the bottom, Berkeley in the middle, Charleston at the top. Charleston's levy is the lowest in the aggregate, 138.3 mils for operating, 26 for debt, for a total of 164.3. And you'll see on a future slide that we're showing 141.3 for the fiscal 25 levy, which also includes reducing debt down to 23. So it's still an aggregate 164.3 levy. It's just shifting between those two categories. Berkeley coming in at 206.8 and then Dorchester too, you can't see with the PDF, but they're at 192.8 operating and 65 debt is what that's saying there.
And just, just for the viewing public who, who aren't maybe familiar, would you explain why it matters whether that's going against GOF or debt on the mills?
Sure. So the GOF levy is not taxed to 4% owner occupied properties based on Act 388 under state law. So if there is something that's levied on that side, your owner occupied home does not see that on the bill or it sees it, but then it's credited back out. On the debt side, that's applicable to all real and personal property in the county, no matter the assessment ratio. So you do pay the 26 mils on your owner occupied home. And I don't, you know, it's not to get into the semantics of a tax decrease, but if we did this, it would decrease the overall tax bill for owner occupied parcels only as a result of them going from 26 down to 23 mils, shifting between operating and debt, the total levy for a 6% or greater property or personal property, in the case of vehicles, remain the same. So not trying to necessarily characterize it that way, but that is the effect that this swap would have on the overall picture for tax bills in Charleston County. You know, you look at the, the big picture here, and I don't know how well you can see this comparison down there, but we had a conversation last week comparing retail structures within Charleston and Dorchester County, for example. So I pulled a grocery store, the Lowe's Foods, not to pick on anybody in particular. But the one on Beast Ferry compared to the one on Dorchester Road in the Oakbrook area of Somerville. The tax bill for the one on Beast Ferry is 136,000 dollars last year. And that's in city limits in the city of Charleston. The one on Dorchester Road and Oakbrook is in the unincorporated area of Somerville. And they paid 383,000 dollars to equalize that, meaning the value of the building's the same, the jurisdiction's the same. Only thing that's different is the actual millage levy. Their tax bill would be still roughly double what it is in Charleston County as a result. And this is a little bit of, of extra information, but we pulled earlier the cost of bread and the cost of milk at each store, just to see what the circumstance would be. And ironically, the cost of a gallon of milk, it, the one on Dorchester Road is some 39 cents cheaper than the one in Charleston, even though the tax bill in Charleston is less, you're paying more for the same gallon of milk than you are on the one on Dorchester Road. So not trying to make anything of that. But, uh, you know, I, I think that the, the retail industry in particular, if I make any point, is very much concerned about the demographics of income profiles and everything in the areas that they're located. And, you know, the notion of a property tax bill doesn't necessarily directly calculate how they, you know, price consumer goods. But I also just wanted to point out the, the significant disparity in the millage levy for a district that we're, you know, geographically adjacent to in terms of Berkeley and Dorchester too. So I'll maybe pass the next two slides over to Mr. Brigman, talking about teacher compensation and non-teacher compensation examples. We've provided a few examples based upon the five, 7,500 and $10,000 schedules for comparison.
Sure. Thank you, Daniel. So I know you all have seen comparisons and charts done like this before in the past by, by my group in HR. But this is basically, we're looking at three different teachers based on degrees and experience, where the teacher currently is for 2024. And then stepping the teacher and then also showing if it's a 5,000, 7,500 or $10,000 increase. So that first teacher bachelor step zero, that's our first year teacher in one of our classrooms today at 48, 146. You can see the value of the step at $928. 5,000 again, 7,500 or 10. This teacher is going to step to step one for 2025. And you can see the new salary under the 2025 category at the, at the end on the far right. If you go down another, we have a master's teacher at step 15. The teacher currently makes 69,000, 016. Steps to 16 and you can see the adjustment in salary on the far right. And again, for a bachelor's teacher at a step 25. And go to the next slide, and this is showing our non-teachers in our, the, in our schools as well as central office. And what I want to say about, especially for anybody who's watching that might be one of our employees in these groups, for the school-based support staff, we do have a task force that's been looking at all of the job descriptions and positions that are school-based. We had pretty much an all-day meeting Friday to, to go over the data that's been collected and need a little more time, so we're meeting again this week. And so this is totally based on the salary structure itself, where our current employees are on the structure. This is not taken into account if there will be any adjustments by reviewing their job descriptions. But first here, we have a teacher assistant for 190 days at step 12. Moving to step 13, of course, and the reason you see two different salary levels for 2024 and across the system is we have teacher assistants, either A, have a pair, the paraprofessional exam or 60 hours of credit, or they actually have a degree. So the degree is paid slightly higher. So you can see if you have a 99% of market, what the adjustment would be and then 100% of market. So this does take into account that there are 190 days for this annual salary. Of course, these employees are hourly. I did not include the hourly amount on this. Student concern specialists, the same scenario. Again, 99%, 100%. Secretary bookkeeper going from step 14 to 15. A manager in our system moving from step 11 to step 12 and then an officer. So this, these are, I think Mr. Calhoun requested this at Audit and Finance, maybe Mrs. Roberson to see what this looks like. Again, we have not finalized the recommendation for school-based support staff such as teacher assistants, student concern specialists.
Yes, uh, um, this is Derek Calhoun. Yes, this is what we asked for. And this is particularly what Ms. Stamp was asking for at Audit and Finance. Thinking about that 27,000 and that 29,000 moving up for FY 25 for a teacher assistant. And she was asking that mainly because of, you know, we want people to be able to have a livable wage within our system. I don't know who about to make, who about to be able to live off of 29,000. And even if we do this, do the 100% of market the way we are, that is still very low. When we're looking at, uh, you know, trying to get everybody who works within our system having a level wage. So if for board members who don't know, the question was, how do we give them a raise to where they can actually feel it? And that's, that's where Ms. Stamp really wanted to get down to. How do we give our classified staff a raise to where they can actually feel it, going into their paychecks as opposed to, you know, the 2,000 and say if the insurance increase or, or anything pops up like that, that 2,000 out of that $2,200, they wouldn't fill that at all.
Yes, sir. I, I don't think there was a, I could not hear you earlier. I don't think you directly had a question. It was more of a statement, right? Okay.
No, that was a statement. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I, I just want to make sure, and, and that is part, Mr. Calhoun, what the committee is working on is looking at the level of position. So it could be that a teacher assistant or a student concern specialist would move up a, a pay grade. So we're going through that process now. That was definitely a big part of the conversation among the, the group, which is, has been made up of not just employees in these positions, but principals and, and other stakeholders have been part of the conversation. And it has been around, you know, how someone lives off a 29,000 or $27,000 salary as well in our system. So I understand. That's, I think that's my last.
All right. If we go to the next slide. So this is the first pass of a multi-year forecast that looks at several components of the overall budget picture. A lot of this data feeds from some of the data that you've seen in the past, kind of in numerical form on the slide. But I want to point out several things here. On the left-hand side, the primary axis is your fund balance. And on the right-hand side, the secondary axis is the overall revenue and expenditure budget. So the small red line is your revenues, the black line is your expenditures over the fiscal 24 projected year end through fiscal year 2028 horizon. The shaded red area is your fund balance and the kind of blue, I don't even know what color that is presenting on the screen, is your fund balance requirement per the policy. So what I wanted to show here is that in fiscal year 2024, we're anticipating that fund balance will grow to roughly 211.9 million dollars. The fund balance requirement, once you strip out the Esser sustainability funds that were never part of that fund balance requirement and the kind of unspendable component, you're sitting around, you know, 200, 211.9 available and 113.4 required. So kind of as part of the overall budget plan to balance, we're proposing that use of fund balance, not in excess of the amount that we accrued at fiscal 24 year end to balance in fiscal year 2025. And so you can see that the revenue and expenditures, there is a gap between revenues and expenditures. It says lines kind of diverge in that year. But what I wanted to point out is that strategically, we can use this fund balance that we've accrued. And the policy, of course, increases every year as the two-year look back, two-month average continues to increase commiserate with the increase just to the budget. But as you get out to fiscal year 27 and 28, even though you're getting very close to meeting where your fund balance is compared to what your fund balance requirement is, you can see that the actual variance between revenues and expenditure shrinks considerably. And this entire picture is supported on 141.3 mils over that four-year horizon without a tax increase. Using fund balance as a means to strategically sustainably balance the budget until we reach a point where our revenues and expenditures very closely align. I will say that, you know, there's further refinement to be done here with this model. And I think a lot of that's going to be through our overall experience in fiscal year 2025. As we continue to true up and, and make the budget more lean. I'm still trying to be conservative in the overall process of balancing. So I would anticipate that if we budget a use of $30 million of fund balance next year, that we will use some of that fund balance, which is intended. As you remember, this year there was $14 million budgeted and we didn't use any of it. We actually contributed. And so I'm anticipating that we would use some of the fund balance, but maybe not 100% of what's budgeted, which would continue to help that overall process. And the fund balance use each year would be less than what we're showing in this model. So this ideally is kind of a worst-case scenario, you know, each year. And what I did for assumptions on the expenditure side is included the $5,000 base scenario that we've just shown you for teacher pay, the 99% of market for non-teachers and all of the other considerations that you've been provided, as well as the implementation of the WSF. And then in 26 and 27, utilize the rest of those Esser sustainability funds, included a $35 million increase in funding for compensation next fiscal year. When I say next fiscal year, I mean fiscal year 2026, following fiscal 25 to implement the other half of the teacher pay increases and the 100% of market scenario for non-teachers. And then after that began to grew, to grow all of those scenarios based on a look back on CPI. So the ideal situation would be, once you reach that kind of a tangible, sustainable market situation, would be to start growing your compensation more naturally based on the growth in the market, so that it was more of a step and a cola each year, instead of these major jumps that we've had to make over the last couple of years to try to kind of keep up with the, the overall market. And then same thing on the transfers, transfers to charter schools, following the policy based on revenue growth each year. The expenditures growing in line with increases for contracts lining up with historical CPI and historical trends. Just to be able to overall, try to paint a picture that what we're doing this year can be sustained. And that some of this fund balance that has been accrued by the board's decisions in the past in terms of, you know, being able to put some of those dollars away, especially. um, you know, being able to put some of those dollars away, especially in the the face of the S or cliff uh can be used while still maintaining a healthy fund balance for emergency reserves and for cash flow requirements. Um so if you go to the next slide, I presented one other opportunity here. Um this is generally the same model. Um but this includes a scenario where we go to a hundred and forty five mils, which would be three point seven mils over the current aggregate, which is supportive of the seventy five hundred dollar teacher pay scenario. So it's kind of a a middle line, you know, actually provides um, you know, an increase over the sum of everything that was provided this year, plus the bonuses. Um and provides a millage increase requirement uh in fiscal twenty five, which is sustained over the course of the fiscal twenty five through twenty eight horizon. And really, the only notable difference there is if you look at the fund balance, and I have to have to really zoom in on this in Excel to show it to you. But if you look at the fund balance as you go out to FY twenty seven and FY twenty eight, and I'll go back to the other slide, you can see the oh, sorry, I realize I'm not controlling it on my screen and I have to actually ask for it to be controlled from another screen. You can't see what I'm doing over here. Um but if you go back and forth between the two, you'll notice that that crossover point in fiscal year twenty seven and fiscal year twenty eight in terms of fund balance available to fund balance requirement just changes ever so slightly. Um so we can go ahead and move forward to uh thirty five again.
Can I ask one question, Dana?
Yes, sir.
Um and I'm sure you, I I know not in the slide deck, but I'm sure you've looked at it. What would it look like if if we waited to see how the uh reassessment comes out and didn't do a millage increase until twenty six?
So that's a good question. Um so I assumed for reassessment several factors. Um I looked back to what happened in twenty twenty. And in twenty twenty, you saw a substantial portion of real property in Charleston County capped at the Act three eighty eight fifteen percent growth cap, which leads me to believe that the fair market value of properties in Charleston County are substantially higher than the growth cap. And so we'll see again, a large portion of the properties in the county capped out in twenty twenty five when reassessment occurs. Um I looked at real property, so your boats and airplanes and vehicles growing between one to two percent in that scenario. And so all in, that shows roughly a ten to eleven percent increase in revenue in fiscal twenty six based on reassessment being implemented and the levy maintaining the same uh or maintaining the same levy. Um you absolutely could, you know, you could see a a higher increase in real personal property. And, you know, a larger portion of your properties cap out at fifteen percent, driving an overall larger increase in assessment that we've assumed and, you know, four percent increase in assessments would make a sizable difference to this picture. I just didn't want to go any higher than our historical experience to make sure that I wasn't being too, you know, high drive on revenues. Um but, you know, given the experience in property growth and truck value growth in Charleston County over the last five years, it's not out of the question that reassessment could drive a a higher increase in assessments than what this is projected, which would help both the FY twenty six budget balancing exercise and the overall fund balance picture in the out years.
Well, and and the reason I ask is is i- if we were to go with the seventy five hundred dollar increase. Theoretically, if I'm understanding your math correctly, that could be done without the millage increase in twenty five. We wait till the reassessments come out. If it comes out, then great. If not, like the the millage increase doesn't need to happen in twenty five in order to do the seventy five hundred dollar. Uh tho- those two don't have to be tied together. That I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Well, so reassessment, while it hits in tax year twenty five, is effective fiscal year twenty six. So i- I'm going to give a a hybrid of the point you were making. You would need the tax increase to do the seventy five hundred this year. But if the reassessment values came in substantially higher than what we're forecasting, you could potentially roll back off of it in fiscal twenty six and it would only be a one year type situation, but you would need it to balance this year.
Why couldn't we pull more out of the fund balance if we're, I guess, I I'm looking at a at a fund balance, it's what, double what it needs to be? We're working to get twenty eight uh thirty two million dollars out of it. So if we wanted to do the twenty five, the seventy five this year, couldn't we pull more out of fund balance to get us closer to level and then decide on a tax increase? I I I think you get where I'm coming. I'm trying to avoid a tax increase unnecessarily because it looks like we're increasing taxes and have too much money.
So you you could, I mean, that twelve million dollars. Um you could pull an additional twelve million out of the fund balance in the budget this year. See how the fiscal year twenty five experience rolls forward, knowing that, you know, in the event that reassessment came in close to the projected, you would have to increase taxes in fiscal twenty six. Um or to the other point, if it came in substantially higher, you might have used that fund balance, but it would still sustain the future model uh based upon the current levy if we had a substantially better experience during that process. So it it's it's that's a fair question, absolutely.
I just to put a fine point on it, and I hesitate to support a tax increase so that we don't break the bank four years from now. I would, yeah.
I understand. I understand the question and that, you know, trying to look at this, the overall smoothness of it, I guess, if you will, in terms of having nothing this year, nothing next year and onward. Like if we were going to do something, making it in the current and then rolling back off of it, but again, yeah, you've got enough. You could appropriate more fund balance than we're currently recommending. It would take the fund balance appropriation up to approximately forty two million in fiscal twenty five to be able to balance if you did the seventy five hundred in fiscal twenty five.
But we have the cash, we have the reserves to do it.
You do. If, you know, the the figure, the the state department's policy is one month of operating. And our policy is two months of operating based on the analysis of the last two fiscal years budgets. And then averaging those out and then doing that based on, you know, two two months of that that average. Think so, yeah. So if you go on to slide thirty six. So just next steps, um, you know, while we feel really good about this picture at this point in the process and, you know, we're next time we meet is going to be to present first reading of the budget. Uh we do have some refinement to the central office reductions as we continue throughout the process. Um those things will be adjusted to the bottom line all prior to first reading. The revenues, of course, are not final. We're still looking at the final collections for this tax year. Um with the TIF growth, the fee in lieu of tax revenues and the proper personal property growth. I mean, we're right now, we posted February vehicles and personal property, but we still have March, April, May and June that we need to post. And depending on how those come in, uh we may be able to adjust that year end figure uh up ever so slightly. Um and and I say that because if you recall uh with this fiscal year, the hundred and thirty eight point three mil levy was an increase of eight point three mils over the prior year levy. And the way that vehicles are assessed and taxed, it's a January through June and July through December cycle. So we're just now getting the benefit of the first six months of personal property being taxed at that new rate because the first six months prior were taxed at the old rate. And so the the heavy revenue coming in from personal property is going to happen between January through June of this year. And then we'll get the full benefit of the hundred and thirty eight point three mils for twelve months in fiscal year twenty twenty five. Um if you go to the next slide. We are looking, and this is by no means a uh a promise or a a fully vetted statement at this point in time. But we may have some S or dollars after we submit our reallocation to the state that could offset the expenditure uh for positions that were S or approved previously from July one through September thirtieth. So if there's a position that was previously S or approved or a program that was previously S or approved that we've budgeted a hundred percent in the GOF in fiscal twenty five. If we have some savings, we may be able to use those to offset a quarter of the cost of that position in fiscal twenty five, just to help the GOF out a little bit more. Um to make sure that we spend every last dollar of S or allocation before the September thirtieth deadline. So we have been working on the reallocation that we talked about Audit and Finance Committee uh to bring that to SDE so that in the April report, we can present that to the the Audit and Finance Committee um in May and the board. Um and then we're also looking at um, you know, just the category categorization of those savings to make sure that we're prepared uh to be able to move forward with that plan and to be able to to use every last dollar. Uh a particular note on, I guess it's Wednesday or Thursday of this week, that's the deadline for uh Friday of this week requisitions to be entered against S or dollars for this fiscal year. So after that cutoff, we should be able to see, you know, where things land with purchased services because we're really just incurring nominal P card expenditures and salary and benefits expenditures from that point forward. So that'll also help us see where we had encumbrances that had not been expended. When we release those encumbrances, what dollars are available? So we're working on that and that will only serve to help the budget. Um and then also between now and the next time we meet, uh we'll prepare the budget document for first reading. So that's why tonight's meeting is really important to get the overall temperature of the board in terms of giving us good direction to move forward with a first reading package that we can bring to you. Um largely intact uh for review and approval when we get to the committee of the whole and ultimately the the full board meeting in May. Uh because then we'll move forward with our uh second reading and public hearing in June, but I'll have to answer any questions and turn it over to Ms. Huggins to close us out.
Uh real quick, if we do the reallocations, as you just stated, would that um, will we go off the impact reports of who we actually uh try to give money to?
So think of this as more of an opportunity to make sure that the dollars are expended. So it it wouldn't change the overall fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. But by and large, we would probably try to shift those dollars towards approved full time positions. And then that way we would, you know, guarantee there's an incumbent in that seat and that we know between July one and September thirtieth that their salary and benefits is going to be X. So that we know that whenever we close out, we've we're going to spend those dollars. I I would prefer not to shift those dollars to any further purchase services because we know based on what we've seen with the WSF so far, that there's more than what we're going to have by way of S or savings and personnel that gets budgeted. So we could just try to use those dollars for uh personnel and make sure that every last dollar is expended.
I agree with that assessment. Thank you, Mr. Prentice. So on the last two slides here, Maggie, um we'll just close out how we started this whole budget season when we talked to you that very first workshop about our philosophy. And I really want to thank Mr. Prentice, who's joined the team and just with a a a brilliant mind, been able to to take this vision and put it into action. So, Mr. Prentice, again, we want to thank you and your team for the great work you've done. First, allowing growth to pay for growth using the current millage levy. Then considering our ability to reallocate amongst the levies based on our debt schedules, use the fund balance for certain expenditures when appropriate. And then when everything else is exhausted, ask you to add additional millage um for for our work here in Charleston. The last slide here, as Mr. Prentice alluded to, the next um committee of the whole on the seventh or uh the Audit and Finance on the seventh of May will be the first reading. Um we'll review that with the Audit and Finance Committee, our first, our our last budget workshop, excuse me, will be May the thirteenth. We'll have the first official reading with the board on the twentieth and the public hearing followed by the second reading of the budget on June the twenty four. So we're certainly open to questions, comments, concerns, feedback from you as we work collaboratively, as Mr. Prentice alluded to earlier, to put together a solid package to share for the first reading with the Audit and Finance, May seventh. Mr. Kelly.
Want to kick us off?
I I don't have any more questions. Um I think I asked all my questions at Audit and Finance. Let me just say thank you um for um such a detailed um report and um an excellent budget workshop. This is um and and I have to say, and um in all transparency, this is the best um budget workshop that I've attended um in my fourteen months of serving. Uh this is very, uh this is budgeting um at its best right here. So I look forward to the first reading. Um and I also would like to share that I've received positive feedback, um emails coming in from um district um employees saying that they watch the Audit and Finance Committee meeting and that they really um appreciated the conversations. Um they followed. It was thorough. So um let's keep continue in this direction um moving forward. So thank you for this. I have no further questions.
Dr. Dimple.
Um thank you so much for the presentation. It has been very clear and I really appreciate that. Um I just feel I want to reiterate my commitment um that I I want to see us have our employees have livable wages and that um the maximum that we can that we can allocate for them, that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
I just want to ditto everything that um my colleagues have said so far. And also say, I just want to um say on behalf of everybody that's spoken to me about the budget process. Thank you for uh expediting and getting things to us early rather than later. And also um very much grateful for years projected rather than just looking at the ground right in front of us. So thank you.
Yeah, I I commend you. I think uh offline, I'm going to want to sit down and talk to you more about the transfer question.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, I think it's great.
Uh, Mr. Calhoun, any additional?
I have nothing additional. Thank you.
Sir.
I just want to say that I too sat in on YouTube and watched the Audit and Finance meeting and I am so excited about your attention to detail and your excellence in all of you putting this budget together. So thank you very much.
So well done again, times nine. Um one specific question is, of course, tax increases, just the term, even if it were one penny, makes people go like this. But if we were to consider the seventy five hundred dollars increase for teachers, the ninety nine percent market for the other employees. Um we would, for a balanced budget this year, we would need the three point eight millage increase. But we would not need a millage increase in the next two years for sustainability. That's my question.
So that that is a, that is a correct statement that you could balance the budget with, you know, if our goal is to appropriate no more than thirty million dollars in fund balance, then yes, you would need the millage increase this year. To Mr. Kelly's point, you could appropriate more fund balance and you may have to balance that off on future growth and, you know, increase millage in a future year. No more than the three point seven mils uh that we were proposing for the seventy five hundred dollar scenario.
Thank you.
There's a couple ways to look at it.
Yeah, and 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 the point I was getting at was that we in inside that same window of dollars, we could have, we could accomplish both and then see if the growth comes back favorably for us. A potential, anyway. Uh, sir, phenomenal. Um Ms. Huggins, thank you uh to the whole team for all the work. Um I yeah, I I have nothing further other than uh, well, did it wonderful work and this is a wonderful breath of fresh air. So thank you.
Thank you all. Again, uh the kudos go goes to the to the greater team and certainly Mr. Prentice for his leadership, Mr. Brigman around the Teacher Compensation Task Force, Classified Pay, the work he's done. It's really missing on the academics and capital side, so we appreciate the team effort, that's for sure. So that's all we have for this budget workshop, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, well, uh hmm, wow. We advertised five thirty, didn't we, for the public, for the Calhoun start? Five fifteen.
Ms. Danny.
So five fifteen, oh, five thirty?
It's five.
Five thirty. I hate to disenfranchise anyone who's driving in uh to join us for the committee of the whole. Um so I suggest that we um sure.
Could we call the meeting of the whole, change the agenda and have part of this executive session and then come back out at five?
Oh, good call.
We would be happy to do that.
I'm totally okay with that.
They legally do that.
Oh, absolutely. Any objection, any, did everybody understand the suggestion?
Absolutely.
Any objection to that? Uh, Mr. Calhoun, did you catch the suggestion? Okay, uh you're on mute, sir, if you're if you're talking.
If we call it to get order early, it's not a violation. Not if we do it in the night, we'll change the agenda.
Okay. All right. Well, then we shall move on to item two, a formal call to order. Do I hear a motion, Ms. McKinney, about the adoption of the agenda?
Uh, yes. I I would like for us to amend the agenda to begin with executive session, ending executive session to come back out at open session at
Second.
Well. Yeah, stand by one. I don't see in a, I don't see an executive session here.
All right, so let's let's rethink this.
Yes, I was, I'm sorry. I was just trying to say that we don't have an executive session. We have a special call meeting. So we cannot
Oh, yeah.
The meeting for
But the chair can call a special call meeting whenever it it is the chair's ability for a special called meeting.
That's correct. Could could we not go into the special called meeting now?
Correct.
Yes, yes, sir. That's what we would recommend, calling to order the special call, that is going into the executive session. Then adjourning that meeting. then adjourning that meeting, starting the Committee of the Whole. Then you would have to call the special called meeting back to order to take action on the 250 list that is required to be discussed at the Committee of the Whole.
I have a question.
Sure.
So we've already called the Committee of the Whole? No.
No. We did. And there's an easy solution to this, though. If someone will make, or I move that we I move that we reset, not adjourn, recess. I move that we recess Committee of the Whole until the conclusion of the special called meeting.
I second it.
Any objections? Pardon, sir?
I, do we have the parliamentarian there for that one? Because I don't, I don't know if that would be an order.
Mr. Johnson, would you think it's in order to adjourn to, to stand in recess? A committee meeting until a special called meeting?
To recess, yes.
Okay, Committee of the Whole stands in recess. Well, hold on.
24 Board Trustees, special call to meeting. Do I have a second?
Second. Wait, you're calling it to order?
Yes, that's all in favor. First thing up on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Still moved.
On favor, any objections? The agenda is proved as written. We'll move on to item two, which is to convene into executive session. I'd like to file, propose a motion to move into executive session.
So moved. A second.
Any objections?
Yep.
We are now in executive session.
We're not the board of trustees by any stretch of the imagination. We did want to make a very special presentation to Miss Grant before she had to leave. And so I'm sorry audience, but you'll hear this part twice because we want to give Miss Grant her full recognition. On April 23rd, 2024, CCSD and districts across the nation will celebrate National School Driver, School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. In honor of National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, the board will recognize a host of drivers serving our district who are employed by our service provider for student. The most senior drivers employed by First Student, one of whom is Miss Grant with 44 years of service. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Lynch to share a little bit more about Miss Grant.
Good evening everybody. So just a real quick few quick things that I learned about Miss Grant and her service. 44 years with the district that I wanted to share with everybody. So Miss Grant initially started with the district as a first grade teacher's assistant at Hersi. Miss Grant and her husband William have been married 57 years. Fifty seven. Mr. Grant also works for the district as a crossing guard on Park West Boulevard. I learned that this evening. He's been crossing guard for 13 years. So both of them together serve our students. They got married at a very early age. I believe they were still in high school at the time when you have to were married thereabouts. That's the story I heard. Just graduated. Okay. Miss Grant became a was a mother at an early age and went on to graduate from Charles A. Brown High School and graduated from the College of Charleston. As being a young mother, Miss Miss Grant always had a special fondness for young parents and so therefore she always found it a way to end up driving our Head Start bus, which was known as the bus for a lot of our teenage parents, otherwise known as the Head Start bus today. They call it the baby bus. But anyway, 44 years, we appreciate you. I thank you very much for all you've done, for all the students that you've cared for, and for being a devoted employee for the district. Thank you.
Miss Grant?
I just want to say thank you so much and God bless you all and all that you do.
Thank you.
You should only clap tonight. That's how you answer the tree.
Now entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene into public meeting. Do I have a second? Objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. We are now back into public session. We will move on to item five A, which is the annual renewal of contracts for the 2024-25 staff. Motion before the Board is to approve the issuance for of contracts for the 2024-25 year complying with the Teacher Employment and Dismissal Act and based on contractual obligations or budgeted allocations for all certified staff. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Yes, we're in Board Docs, correct? I would ask everybody to cast their vote. It's is Ms. Waters and Mr. Cowen, are they?
So special called meeting is still.
And the motion passes on to item six, which is the audit and finance purchase of contracts greater than two hundred and fifty. Is there any objection for me bringing forth a motion to the Board to approve the list of purchases and contracts rated than two fifty through March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four?
I believe we have to hear the presentation first. And the cow.
We can move it forward unless there's an objection. Otherwise, we have to recess and come back after Cal, which we can do, which we can do.
I would personally, I think it'd be better to recess and then come back after Cal.
Ms. Parliamentarian, so I just make a motion to recess at this point.
Until the until defined time.
Yeah. Until.
End of Cal.
Yeah.
So we will recess. I'll make a motion to recess the special meeting until the end to reconvene after the end of Cal.
Second.
We are in recess.
Oh, we have to vote.
Any debate? Hearing none? Put it to vote. We can do it a voice vote.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Notion passes. We are in recess. I will now pass it on to Kelly for Cal.
Actually. You ready? Okay. All right, I'm going to call the Board of Trustees committee whole meeting back into order. We are at item three A for special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly and trustees. On April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, CCSD and districts across the nation will celebrate National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. In honor of National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, the Board will recognize the three remaining CCSD-employed drivers who have collectively given over one hundred years of service to our district. Susan Singleton with thirty-six years of service. Brenda Munjen with thirty-six years of service. Pamela Munjen with thirty years of service. There are also a host of drivers serving our district who are employed by our service provider, First Student. The most senior drivers employed by First Student are Yvonne Perry, forty-four years of service. Ms. Patricia Grant, who had to leave to attend another engagement, who has forty-four years of service. And Ms. Quida Hayward, thirty-nine years of service. We invite the public to show your gratitude for all of our bus drivers on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. James Lynch, Executive Director of Transportation, to the podium to introduce these very special members of the CCSD community.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to introduce these six amazing, well, five right now. You've missed the six amazing women that have a combined two hundred and twenty-nine years of service to our district and serving our children. I also have with me Gary Reese from First Student, Senior Location Manager for First Student. So wanted to take a quick second just to give you a quick recap on just some of the things that I've learned about each of them. I'll start with Ms. Hayward. Ms. Hayward is assigned to the Azalea Bus Lot on our North Charleston area. She has been with the district for thirty-nine years. She joined us in nineteen eighty-five. She's a proud graduate of Baptist Hill, class of nineteen eighty. Ms. Hayward initially started with the district as an admin in the front office at Meminger and soon became a bus driver. Ms. Hayward has served the North Charleston area for the past twelve years. She explained explained to me that she always meets her students where they were without judgment and focuses on building trust with them throughout the school year. In addition to her bus driver duties, Ms. Hayward is involved with the Feeding the Hungry program that delivers food to our families in need. She's also very involved with supporting her coworkers as she started a fund that basically helps provide birthday cakes for her coworkers on their birthday because she feels that everybody should should feel special on their birthday. Since nineteen eighty-five, Ms. Hayward has only missed two weeks of work and both of those weeks were due to deaths in her family. Ms. Perry. Forty-four years. I just from talking to Ms. Perry, and I also learned that she is retiring from her CCSD duties with forty-four years. Teacher assistant. Yeah, but she's going to go down to one job. She'll do that for at least fifty-four years, I think. She's Ms. Perry's also assigned to our Azalea lot where she serves our special needs students. Ms. Perry has been a driver for forty-four years. She joined in nineteen eighty. Ms. Perry graduated from Bonds Wilson High School and attended St. Augustine College in Raleigh, North Carolina, majoring in early childhood education. Ms. Perry's first job after leaving college was working with special needs students at Charles Web Center. Her experience working with special needs students provided her with an opportunity to help establish special needs programs at Mary Ford, Berry Elementary School, Hunley Park, and A.C. Cochrane, where she has worked for the past twenty years as a teacher assistant. Ms. Perry has been a bus driver since she was a junior at Bonds Wilson. When she drove a bus, they were all stick shift. And in order to operate the wheelchair ramp, you had to use a manual hand crank, I believe, is what I was told. When Ms. Perry enters a classroom, students will often refer to her as Pretty Perry. That nickname was given to her years ago by a former student because he said, Ms. Perry is always smiling and is always happy to see. And we're happy to see you as well. So you're making me smile too. So. All right, my CCSD drivers. So we have three remaining CCSD drivers that still are with us and hopefully will still be with us for quite a while to go. I'm going to start with Ms. Pamela Munjen. Ms. Munjen is the baby of the group. She says thirty-one years. She started her career in nineteen ninety-three. Ms. Munjen works out of our Hollywood bus lot and she serves our special needs students. She's also a proud graduate of Baptist Hill High School, class of eighty-three. Pam also graduated from Trident Tech as a pharmacist tech. Ms. Munjen's first job with the district was working as a TA with Baptist Hill Special Need Students. The experience working with special needs families motivated Pam to become a full-time special needs bus driver. Throughout her entire career, Pam has always opened to has opted to serve our exceptional students. Ms. Munjen has always requested special needs routes as she believes these students require special attention and love. In two thousand and fifteen, Ms. Munjen had a medical emergency on her bus. Because of her medical background, she quickly realized that she was it was a serious situation and immediately took steps to provide medical attention. Due to her quick intervention, she was able to get the situation under control and was able to keep the student calm and focused to the point where the paramedics arrived, they asked Ms. Munjen to escort the child in the ambulance to the hospital. In two thousand and fifteen, Ms. Munjen was recognized as School Bus Driver of the Year. In her free time, Ms. Munjen enjoys traveling and seeking new adventures. Thank you, Pam. Ms. Susan Singleton. Ms. Six Ms. Singleton works at our Azalea lot and has been a safety trainer for the past twenty years. She has thirty-six years as a school bus driver for the district, and she graduated from Fort Johnson High School, which is now James Allen Charter High School. For the past twenty years, she's probably trained almost, we figure about thirteen hundred bus drivers throughout our district. Susan, despite her quiet, reserved disposition, she's earned the nickname from her peers as Sarge as she is a no-nonsense trainer with high expectations. Ms. Singleton has also thirty years of nursing experience through her time with the Sisters of Charity Organization. In nineteen ninety-four, Ms. Singleton was recognized as CCSD CCSD Bus Driver of the Year. Thank you, Susan. Ms. Brenda Munjen, sister-in-law to Pam, also works out of our Hollywood bus lot. Ms. Munjen has been a CCSD bus driver for thirty-seven years as she joined the district in nineteen eighty-seven. Ms. Munjen is also a graduate of Baptist Hill High School, class of eighty-one. Ms. Ms. Munjen's journey to becoming a bus driver started in April of nineteen eighty-seven, when she lost her five-year-old daughter. Ms. Munjen explained that during this low point in her life, she recognized that she needed a job where she would be working with children every day. Ms. Munjen's heart. Miss Munjen's heart was full of love and she needed children to share it with. Four months after her daughter passed, Miss Munjen obtained her CDL and became a full-time bus driver. For the past thirty-seven years, Miss Munjen has worked exclusively in the Hollywood area where she continues to share her love with children. Thank you, Brenda.
Many thanks to each of you. Trustees, if you could join us in the front for a photo, I would be grateful. Thank you. Thank you for your service to our students.
Yeah, over to him for Ms. Huggins.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kelly. Tonight Superintendent's Report will overview our work around literacy and provide you some progress on Board Goal One, which focuses on groups of students, our Black and Hispanic fifth graders reading on grade level mid-year as well as all of our students reading on grade level by fifth grade. The first slide here gives you a brief overview of I-Ready. We use I-Ready, as you know, to progress monitor how students are progressing towards their meet and exceed status on SC Ready at the end of the year. We also use it as a way to support students throughout the year. So we're gonna show a brief, brief video, about three minutes to make sure you understand and hear from teachers how they use I-Ready in the classrooms to support student learning. Maggie?
The I-Ready program has a system of personalized lessons. It's designed to fill a student's knowledge gap and it helps every student reach their grade level proficiency. Our scholars have become very thoughtful analytical readers. They have productive struggles in the classroom and they are learning to work through their math problems and find the best way to solve them. I-Ready also enables us to monitor our scholars' learning and adjust their assignments as needed. We have seen positive gains on the SC Ready assessment due in part to our instructional practices in which we use the I-Ready data to help guide our instruction and it has resulted in positive student engagement and gains in both ELA and math.
I see it as a driving tool that allows students to progress monitor. It allows us to see where the students are, which helps us make decisions to drive the students to where they need to be. But it allows us to meet them at their individualized level. It also allows us to get that one-on-one understanding of how students feel, not only academically, but how they're feeling as far as their confidence. And when they have that one-on-one time with you, they're very confident in their ability to achieve and master the standards and it shows in a whole group instruction as well. And it influences the environment because it is a huge motivation for the students. They enjoy the lessons. It's fun, it's engaging, and they make those connections. Lots of times, if students have done a lesson that we're currently covering, they volunteer those connections. Miss Adewale, I remember on I-Ready, it showed us how to do it this way and I welcome the connections that are being made.
It, it's fun because it's like you're playing math games. It's kind of like a regular game, but instead you have to think of it as a working game, like you're working to go to get a treat or get good grades or like you're earning a reward. So it's kind of like multiplication or adding, division, subtracting, and it can help you in many different ways.
So the I-Ready scores that they get is just a huge impact on how I teach the classroom. Here at Sona Park, we have something called acceleration time where they're on I-Ready based on what subject area they're focused on today. And I also pull small groups based on what information they need. Based on their I-Ready, I go to the teacher toolbox that I already provide so you get extra instruction for small groups. So the scholars that are fluent with the I-Ready skills and the fifth grade standards, they're on I-Ready to boost their skills even higher in their standards. While those are slightly behind, I pull in small groups to work with them individually to help get those basic facts down to improve their studies and strengths and therefore to become higher throughout the fifth grade career.
I-Ready prepares me by giving me steps to master a difficult equation.
I-Ready impacts student outcomes because it really, it personalizes their learning. Students start out at different points and it allows us to create lessons that build on what they know and move them to the next level. It allows us to identify gaps in student learning and helps us to fill in those gaps and it also helps us to be very intentional with our instruction. It also provides us the opportunity to conference with our students, set goals with them, and celebrate their successes.
You got to hear more tonight about I-Ready as a tool for instruction. So it's not only progress monitoring, but it's also a tool that teachers use to build lessons and to instruct teachers on, on grade level, which we think is a testament to the exciting results that you're going to see tonight. So I'm about to share with you, Maggie, the next slide here. Both our progress toward all students reading on grade level by grade five as well as our African-American and Hispanic students reading on grade le, level. So you'll see here, two board goals around literacy. One, the percentage of Black and African-American and Hispanic fifth grade students reading on grade level will increase from twenty-five-point-five percent in July of twenty-two to sixty-point-seven in July of twenty-twenty-seven as measured by SC Ready. Again, that's the summative test we take at the end of the year or the spring target of thirty-nine-point-four. You'll see in this presentation tonight where we were in the fall, where we are in the winter, excitedly well on our way to meeting that spring target. So the first slide we'll look at, Maggie, next, is all fifth grade students. We want to start with all fifth grade students and look at their progress. You'll see here, see on this slide, exponential growth. Exponential growth between fall twenty-three of all fifth grade students in the system with forty-seven-point-two percent being proficient, meets or exceeds with a significant growth between fall and winter to sixty-four and a half percent. This is the same cohort group of students. So I just want to pause right there and everybody give principals and teachers and the folks around us who are doing great work a round of applause because you don't see that a lot. So what really excites me even more is what's a teacher, always a teacher, I guess, I'll just grab a mic and go, is that this is the same cohort group of students right here, you'll see. And if you look at a, this is a different cohort group of students last year. You see both cohorts of students were performing similarly when they came in. But look at the change in the growth between this cohort group of students last year and this cohort group of students this year. It speaks to the work we're doing around the instructional framework that we talked to you about this year. Professional learning communities, building relationships with kids through that restorative practice type setting. It also speaks to the coherent viable curriculum that Miss Simmons and her team, the Associate Superintendent Jackie and Jennifer have put on that viable curriculum instructional rigorous strategies that work for kids. What's even more exciting, if you look here at these bars, it shows you the progression of students into different ranges of performance from fall to winter. So at the beginning of the year, when we assess students, seventeen percent of students were projected to score exceeds. That over-doubled from fall to winter. Again, a very significant change from last year. So this again is all fifth grade students reading on grade level by grade five. Again, really exciting things. Next slide there, Maggie. You'll see similarly here, if we look literacy grades three through five. So we looked again, our, your goal is all fifth grade students reading on grade level by grade five. But if we look at literacy for all students, grades three through five, you'll see some very similar promising results. This year's cohort of students in grades three through five, forty-eight percent of them were scoring at meets or exceeds in fall compared to sixty-three percent in winter. A lot of times nationally, you see mid-year progress plateau or even regress. This is a significant accomplishment for, for schools, for teachers, for leaders, for our academic team, for our associates who are working so hard. Again, if you look down at those proficiency levels and the advancement, again, over double the percentage of students from fall to winter are projected to be exceeds on SC Ready when they take it in just a few weeks. To the next slide, Maggie. You'll see here the group of students that we are examining for Board Goal One around literacy. There are Black and Brown students reading on grade level by fifth grade. Again, a significant accomplishment for schools, for teachers, for leaders. In the fall, the cohort of fifth grade African-American and Hispanic students reading at or above grade level was about twenty percent. We're now about thirty-eight percent with an eighteen percent gain simply from fall to winter. You saw last year, again, a different cohort group of students who started at the same rate grow only minimally, three and a half percent. Again, another significant growth point is if you see the number of students in the exceeds range in the blue on the fall twenty-three to winter twenty-four, from four percent when they started school to now nearly fifteen percent in the middle, middle of the year. And these tests were administered January, February. So these results are over a month old at this point. So this is a projection of how students will do again when they take SC Ready in just a few weeks. The last slide I have to share with you today is how students are progressing toward those stretch goals. You'll see here the average number of students meeting half of their stretch goal. The top row is this year compared to students in grade, those same grades last year. Again, different cohorts of groups of students unless you look longitudinally. But you'll notice here that more and more students are meeting their stretch goals and we attribute it to the things that you heard earlier in the video with teachers building lessons based on student needs, the work we've done around PLCs, the creative things you see going on at schools like Pinehurst Elementary where they're, they, they're embracing a co-teaching model. The work we're doing across the district on rigorous curriculum and curriculum assessments and making sure we're looking at opportunities for student growth and refining those when we're looking at look for. So we have a lot to be encouraged about as we soon begin the spring testing season. Do you have any questions for me around these literacy, these very impressive literacy student results? Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Mrs. Denmeyer?
No, I have no questions. Very impressive. I look forward to spring testing and getting the results in the fall.
Same, Mr. Robertson. Thank you.
Yes, it's very encouraging to see the number of students in grades three through five, grades approaching and exceeding the literacy goals. I do have a question. With regards to slides five and seven, what services will be provided to the fifth grade students who do not meet the goals this summer to help them get ready for sixth grade? And what are the plans for the upcoming school year when they do move on to sixth grade?
Thank you for that, Dr. Temple. I'm gonna throw it over to Mrs. Simmons to talk more about summer and what we do with students as we prepare for the new year, starting, it's supposed to start tomorrow, but we, we, or Wednesday, but we delayed. But starting this week, we'll begin our, our spring SDRs, our data reviews with principals. And we'll hear firsthand from principals what additional supports that they feel they need between now with this last big push for testing to provide more supports to students. If they need central resources, if they need more intervention support, if they need more support services from Mrs. Simmons and her team. She can talk more fluidly about what specific strategies she has in mind, particularly for summer and preparation for sixth grade.
Thank you for the question, Dr. Temple. So a standard intervention or layer of support that you will find in every school, not unique to particular schools, is the reading intervention approach where we make sure that students in designated groups, depending on where they land on their scores, they have the benefit of receiving tailored scripted instruction from an interventionist. That's one of the things we will in future years look to expand and make sure that we are putting high-quality, high-qualified teachers in front of our neediest scholars because if they are struggling, we want to make sure that the, the bang for the buck is maximized in terms of if it's a pull-out model where we're pulling small groups of children out to receive intense intervention. So our summer enhancement, our summer enrichment programs tailor particularly third graders. Read to succeed legislation requires that we provide intervention, summer enrichment, some type of extra layer of support for our third graders in particular. But for particularly, you asked about the fifth grade scholars who are struggling. The idea at the building level, when you heard in the video, I think it was Heather Burke talked about, or maybe it was Mr. Landfried. He talked about an acceleration period. So what we do understand is if students are lagging and struggling, we want to be able to teach them at their grade level and scaffold and make sure that we're catching them up little by little. And so schools have embedded in their daily master schedules the opportunity for these targeted periods of the day where we can provide systematic instruction based on where they are in their reading skills. And so a couple of elements are always present in our buildings in terms of support and how we make sure our kids are along and along making progress. Dr. Temple?
So, so we have things that we can do when the students are within the school. But what about, I, I'm asking about the summer. I, I am concerned about our fifth graders who are not at their level reading and then we have the summer gap.
Yeah.
And then they're going into sixth grade where reading gets pretty heavy and especially in their science and social studies classes.
Absolutely. So I'll remind you of maybe six months ago when we were talking about moving forward minus ESSER dollars. So for the last three, four years, we had the benefit of ESSER dollars to provide a comprehensive summer school program for all of our scholars. We had it in place for all grades at elementary, middle school, and even credit recovery at the high school. I remember telling the board back in the fall that the five million dollars or so that I had encumbered for summer camps was then going to teacher bonuses. So the truth, the hard truth about it is we sacrifice some things in terms of making sure that we can provide the resources and the promises that we've made. And so I did forfeit a sizable amount of money for the teacher bonuses that would have typically gone to summer enrichment. So whereas in previous years, we had the benefit of serving all elementary grades, this summer with a limited budget, we are doing the third grade Read to Succeed as prescribed by the state. That's the honest truth of it. And so there are many schools who have the resources and the funding to stand up their own summer enrichment programs. So that happens regularly. There are many schools who have the benefit of extra funding, who can also have summer, pardon me, after-school programming. So between the after-school programming in various schools. So between the after-school programming in various schools, the summer programming in various schools, the third grade Read to Succeed camp that the district stands up, there are layers of support. Um, and I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that as we move forward in subsequent years, that we'll have the, the benefit of a more robust summer program.
Okay. And I guess where I'm going to come from then is that, you know, I'm, I'm happy and supportive that, that we were able to use ESER dollars to support our teachers who is the most important person in the classroom is the teacher. However, I, I think it would, it behooves us as a board to know what would the summer camp cost for us to have something for our fifth grade students? Cause obviously, you know, we're always looking at the budget, but then what are the consequences? And to me, the consequences of our fifth graders moving on to sixth grade without the literacy support they need is a big consequence. So I'd like to see a budget proposal on that.
So what we'll do, Dr. Temple, thank you for that, is when we meet with principals, principals give us pretty honest feedback. And so when we meet with principals and SDRs over the two, next two, two weeks, two to three weeks, we'll get feedback on them. Oftentimes principals, particularly for summer programs, ask to stand up those programs themselves. So we will get feedback from principals on which groups of their students they believe are most needy and what they, what kind of support they want from us on that. And we'll circle back with the board and share that with you.
And then if there are some schools that have the ability to offer those programs, um, it would be good to make it accessible to the schools that don't have those because it's, it may be a smaller, you know, number. And then parents could possibly take, uh, advantage of the program in, in schools that maybe aren't their neighborhood schools.
Absolutely. So Ms. Simmons and all working together, we'll circle back on that. Thank you, Dr. Temple.
Thank you. You mentioned, Ms. Simmons, you brought up the state statute. And so everyone here knows how that two fifty K list was a thorn in my side. And I'm sure you probably now understanding that this reading on grade level by grade five is a thorn in my side as well, by grades, um, by fifth grade. To, to Dr. Temple's point, um, State Code fifty-nine, chapter one fifty-five talks about reading on grade level by third grade. Are we ever going to go back to revisit that so that that could be, um, one of our goals? And that would take some of the pressure off of trying to have them ready to read, um, by sixth grade because we would have already accomplished that in third grade according to state code.
So, so we have a updated Read to Succeed legislation that passed very recently that will in subsequent years, um, require that we not only provide summer support for third graders, but we have to envelop first graders and second graders along with the third graders to do just what you're describing, close the gaps earlier and earlier so that by the time they're exiting fifth grade, Dr. Temple, they're not at a disadvantage.
We can talk about, thank you for that, um, Ms. Simmons. Uh, we can, we can certainly as a board, talk about the development of a goal around third grade, Mrs. Roberson. Because the, the, the first year the state summatively assesses students is third grade, however, this is why this goal, you know, the national, all the, most of the national research is around reading on grade level by third, grade three, right? But the reason the goal is the re, the, the goal is because of the lack of summative assessment, you know, prior to grade three. So we could, we could certainly explore how we might do that. But we certainly understand, and so do our principals, the need to have kids reading on grade level as early as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Watley, do you have anything to add?
Now that you called on me. Yes, and I remember. The last time we did this literacy update, it was last quarter, correct?
We updated you in the fall. Yes, ma'am.
How, um, how are we tracking from those numbers in the fall? Um, I know that we were way ahead and we were projected to be way ahead. Did we hit the mark? Did we go over the mark? Did we fall a little short?
Yes, we, we are on track to, um, exceed the spring target for African-American and Hispanic students. With, uh, we're at thirty-seven point seven percent proficiency with the target being thirty-nine point four. So we are on track to exceed that goal. Yes, ma'am. And then all the other areas, we've made double-digit gains. So this growth is significant.
It's, but, but between the last update and this update?
Yes, ma'am. That the, actually, these, these numbers here are exactly that. That's from fall.
Okay.
From fall twenty-three to winter twenty-four for all students. For example, it was a seventeen point three percent gain, which again is, is, is significant.
Right. I, I don't think you're understanding what I'm asking.
I probably not.
And I'm, and I'm not sure if I'm articulating it well. We, we just did this a few months ago.
Right.
Okay. So, um, in the twenty-four year, didn't we?
Twenty-three. Yes, ma'am. In, in, in the, in the fall, we updated you as to where students were on their reading progress. But this is how they've grown since then.
I thought we had done it even.
You, you may be thinking of middle school.
Okay.
Middle school and we've done math.
Okay.
So we've done a lot, you all to be commended for your focus on student outcomes. So we focused on math earlier, um, and we updated you in the fall.
For the literacy?
Yeah, this is the winter.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Ms. Watley.
Thank you.
Uh, I think the results are great. I, I commend both you, Ms. Simmons. I think it's, it shows we're on the right track.
Um, I have a question. I wanted to know, do we have grants or, uh, Title One funding for some of the Title One schools for, um, summer enrichment?
Yes, that's what they use. They typically use their, um, Title One dollars to provide both after-school and summer programming. Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
Yes.
So how do we secure the student attending either for after-school remediation or the summer? We can't demand it like the school year. So how do we effectively reach the students that need it?
You're absolutely right. So what we find, um, what we found over time, we may invite five hundred scholars, perhaps half may show up. And then what we find thereafter is that the longer the program goes, the, the attendance drops off. So what we decided a couple of summers ago is we would layer on not only the, um, academic component, but also enrichment to make sure that they are coming and looking forward to some type of extracurricular activity, whether it's field trips or some type of, uh, karate, whatever it is that's going to draw our scholars in and make them excited about coming each day because it is a challenge, uh, to get scholars in on, on the summer. And then there's vacation. There's just a lot of reasons not to come during the summer. So that's what we've tried to do. I would say, Dr. C would say during the year attendance has been, um, a big burden for us. So imagine getting kids up in the summertime, but it has worked. Um, I will, um, share when we circle back with you what the cost could be to layer on summer enrichment. But we were averaging around six million dollars during the ESER bundle, um, of money to put forth a robust summer program. So, um, no small feat, but nonetheless, we do want to provide, um, scholars and families the benefit of high-quality summer enrichment programming.
And is, is that as effective as having, um, the intervention during the school year?
So again, you must have read the Read to Succeed legislation. So we do believe that teachers are the first interventionist. So we're expecting core instruction to happen, you know, during the classroom, um, period. But we're also expecting teachers to be able to pull small groups and deliver, and deliver where scholars are lagging. And so, uh, I think there's no one-shot solution. So we want to be able to do all of them and do them well, provides a robust core, but also solid enrichment, um, and summer enhancement as well. So we feel like if we can do all of those things at a high level, um, we make progress like you saw, saw in the video and saw on the slide deck that Ms. Huggins prepared for you.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Um, are we, um, offering extra help to parents at home to help their kids get on, read on grade level? Me, cause that extra help at home, the extra books, cause I know where I used to be, we sent books home, we, um, sent little readers home for parents who asked, but if, even if they don't ask, we can offer that to them to help.
Yes. So my per, per view, um, I, I don't want to misrepresent or pretend to know. My point of view is direct services to the schools. I would think the associates might have more intimate detailed knowledge about how schools are then supporting families because that's the goal, to make sure that we deliver, but also families are equipped to support their students at, at home as well, so that we're a partnership. Um, but in terms of this explicit types of programming that's happening at the building level for families, it varies from school to school. So I, I can't really articulate well at a high level on that for you.
And we've piloted some efforts, you know, downtown in the D twenty PCP, for example, the family support coaches, those were some of the goals and for some of our parent advocates. We just don't have enough results yet, like Ms. Simmons said, to really know the impact those things had on student outcomes and/or on parents themselves.
Let me say, Ms., um, Bailey, I can speak for, um, learning services. What we've started doing in D twenty-three and during our parades, instead of giving out candy, we give out books. So, uh, I'm looking forward to see, you know, if there's some type of, um, impact with them getting books instead of candy at parades.
Thank you.
Ms. Watley, did you have another question?
I, um, yes, thank you. I, I was, um, speaking with Dr. Zachary Williams at, uh, Tred Tech today, who is a professor in English. And I sat down with him and we, he was also a, a public school, um, English teacher. And this, he, he was talking to me about some things that are very concerning. And one thing he notices about the children, um, that in high school and then also coming into, um, college, they are lacking a curiosity about the world and, uh, concepts and ideas and things like that. And there's also the concern about the chatbots and AI helping them write papers and of course using the internet to, um, craft ideas versus them being able to problem solve and think things through and being curious to find answers and put the work in to start with an idea and then craft arguments and counter-arguments and things like that. And so as we're going into literacy, I've just been kind of chewing on what he said today, um, i- if there's a way that we can begin to capture their imaginations and getting them curious and wanting to work through problems and things like that, um, getting them to think. He, he, he used the word apathy. There's a lot of apathy, especially post-COVID with these kids. And, um, I, and I think probably computers and social media and, and, um, microwave society and everything's probably, there's probably a lot of contributing factors. So I think that perhaps that's an opportunity for CCSD and our literacy to, um, begin to maybe probe and.
Yeah.
Come up with some ideas.
Yes, ma'am. I do think, um, the textbook series we just adopted. That's grounded in teaching reading through building background and through content areas.
I agree.
Blowing the world, through science and social studies content, enhancing reading skills through that.
We, we discussed that.
Right? So, so I feel like that will particularly at the elementary level, give us a, a solid foundation for building that type of curiosity about the world. Um, and so I think that's a good thing.
While you're on that point, I, I also discussed with him the, the curriculum adoption and the text adoption. And, um, I discussed with him some of the concerns, um, that were given about certain concepts in the CKLA being too advanced for elementary, too complicated. And, uh, he and I both are in agreement that it's good to challenge the kids because they're, they will live up to the, to the standard and expectations that you place for them. And I believe that they're, um, capable. We discussed how like my grandmother, you would never want to sit down and play a game of Scrabble with my grandmother. She would obliterate you. And so, um, that, you know, anyway, he, he was in agreement with, with the text adoption that we, we just did and, and what you just pointed out, so.
So I do have, I have two, was that, that was the end of it?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I do have two questions. Um, the, both the, um, slide five, slide seven show essentially the same numbers. How, wh- what do we point at as to the why between a three percent growth trend and a seventeen percent growth trend? That's just so dramatic. I'm sure someone asked why.
We, go ahead, Ms. Simmons.
So to be honest, um, we were in this very room receiving this, uh, information from the, the good people at I Ready. Um, and so we have to consider a few things. The, the curriculum of choice that we've had, we've seen sizable gains, just having a solid viable guaranteed curriculum across this entire system. I, um, I re-watched, just for whatever reason, last night, um, the video package we put out on EL a couple of, uh, months back. It, it talked, we talked about the idea that when scholars matriculate from a North Charleston School to a West Ashley School, to a James Island School, to a Mount Pleasant School, they have the same high-quality instructional materials at their ready. That can't be understated. We also have invested heavily in our professional learning community so that we're analyzing student work, um, so that we know where the shortcomings or the gaps in student learning are in a way where teachers can then inform reteaching practices. I think that's huge. And then finally, the instructional framework that's standard across our entire system. Because we are so vast and varied, uh, that opens up the door for a lot of, um, variance among schools. What we've worked really hard to do is to make some things really standard across our entire system. That instructional framework is relevant and applicable to all teachers, all schools across our system. So it gives everybody a baseline of how to enter, how to enter a lesson and what happens during the course of a lesson as well as how to wrap it up. We believe all of those things have made a difference in our scores. And I'll also say it was Mr. Grabowski last year who pointed out that we were comparing map to I Ready, apples to oranges. So we've now had the benefit of administering I Ready for consecutive years. That allows for scholars to have familiarity with the instrument itself. I believe that contributes as well. We get better when we're more familiar with an instrument or a platform. I think it all counts. I think it all applies. We, um, at Learning Services at least, we've tried to make sure that there are few things that we hold tight to. We call them our big rocks, our priorities. And then there's some fluidity, some flexibility that schools can, can, um, implement that makes it unique to their own buildings because every building is really different and unique and comes with different challenges. And so we feel like those big rocks have been our advantage in moving the needle forward. And that's our goal and our intention and our charge to keep, to keep the needle moving forward.
Michelle, spot on, Mr. Kelly. It's consistency, it's systems, it's talent in the classroom, it's impeccable leadership with everybody working toward the same goals. So I applaud this board, you didn't adopt a whole nother set of goals when you came on board. So if I were to walk in a classroom, almost anywhere in the system and ask about the board goals, most people would be able to say, we want all students to be right, reading on grade level by grade five. And that's how Dr. Swearingen is holding her principals accountable, how you'll hold me accountable, and how Dr. Swearingen's principals hold their teachers accountable. Teachers are exceptional in this system. I can't say enough great things about them. We've professionally developed them. They know where we're going. They know how to get there and they, they plan, do, they plan, they teach, they study the results, and then they fix it. And we're doing so much better about keeping those systems in place so that people understand how to do that. So these, these gains are, are significant. And again, I think it's consistency, systems and, and talent.
So I, I spent the last, the better part of, I don't know, last ten workdays or something in classrooms, in, in schools. And I can personally attest to just how unbelievably phenomenal, uh, our teachers are, passionate beyond what I realized, I think, uh, have a new appreciation for just how passionate these, these folks are. My concern is, Ms. Simmons, you just said that it was consistency across the district.
Yes, sir.
And yet we just had an adoption of a textbook that were three different, well, three different styles, writers. well, three different styles, writers, publishers, et cetera, across our different age groups uh, uh, across the vertical articulation. Do you, do you have any reservations about the lack of consistency that we just adopted? Is taking into account what you just said?
Solid, solid question. I think it's a fair ask. So when I speak of consistency across the system in terms of practices, um, so we think about it this way. Um, a three-pronged approach, the curriculum, the instruction, and then the assessment. And so the curriculum is what we teach, instruction, how we teach, and of course, assessment, how we measure. And so I I don't want to understate or undervalue textbooks. But the textbooks, they're just A two, they're A two. And for the last twelve years, we've had no consistency in textbooks. We haven't had an adoption in over ten years, and so we haven't had the benefit of that consistent tool. So I'm confident at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and then again, at the high school level, we have the right protocols and practices in place to support the teaching and learning. So despite the textbook, teachers are pulling in resources, they are pulling in novel studies, they're pulling in all tools of the tree, right? To make sure that that textbook allows them to teach high standards. So if the, if teachers are embracing, studying, and implementing standards at a high level, the textbook is just going to allow them to do that well. So absent the textbook, right? We could still teach at a high level if we layer on a a strong curriculum for teachers. Um, and so no, to answer your question about reservations, I I do not have any reservations that as a Learning Services team, that they're all around me, that we can support teachers by developing the curriculum that envelops the textbook that allows for high teaching and learning practices.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Yeah, I guess we'll, we'll, I'll leave that there. I've got a lot of um, a lot of kind of thoughts that I I want to kind of debrief with you. And it's Mrs. uh, um, Huggins, if if anybody guys have time. Yeah. So the the last uh, point or question I have here is uh, on our, actually to to you, uh, Ms. Bailey. Uh, as a strategic education, um, I I think I've asked this in the past, but I object to um, the focus on or separation of of people by race, by of students by race. And so I think we as a board need to look at this goal. Uh, you just said there's, we didn't change any goals. Here I go. Um, uh, because I I don't think it's proper to have a board goal that's focused on, that's focused on a particular group of people that is defined by a trait that is not in their control. So I think, I think it it warrants conversation to adjust the language of our board goal to something more like low performing students or students who are at X percent or something like that, rather than defining someone by the way they look. I just don't think that's proper, and I would actually make the argument that is on its face racist. By definition, it has to be, so.
I just wanted to, to, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the the reasoning behind you going by the ethnic ethnic groups is because the black and Hispanic community are the the low, low poverty areas have the most struggle and issues. So the gains that they are seeing is pushing them forward to achieve more. That's why their focus is on that.
That, thank you for that, Mrs. Bailey. You're 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 right in that thinking. The state, Mr. Kelly, also for purposes of school identification, looks at student group performance just like this. And schools are designated based on how their student groups perform, based on how students with disabilities perform, how students um, student groups perform. Mrs. Roberts or Ms. Dr. Gare, I think I took the microphone earlier, but if you want to give up, give more specificity around this.
Anita, I would just, and and please do, please, uh, Mr. Roberts, please do. But but I would, I would posit you this, just because the state looks at it that way does not make it right. I'm talking about what is actually correct in a society and and splitting people up based on how much melanin is in their skin. And actually, not in my opinion, by actual definition is racist. So if we focus on a particular race, we we have to, by definition, be not focusing on another.
So as a system, Mr. Kelly, we focus on all school, all students, and that's why this presentation started with all fifth graders.
I appreciate that.
But I, but as we look at student groups and as we, as educators, break down the data and look to examine where the gaps are in student performance, we typically see that it's pupils in poverty, and it's um, students with disability, and it's multilingual learners that perform at lower levels than their peers. Um, and many times their peers are white. So if we don't focus on those data points, um, is challenging for us to think about how we can ever grow those students to where they need to be. So that's why in this FY twenty five budget cycle, we're focused on resourcing schools based on the number of kids, um, not by race, by those designations, pupils in poverty, students with disabilities, and um, it's multilingual learners.
So I, then 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 our board goal ought to perhaps be exactly that. Students in poverty should hit a percentage, or students who are non-native English speakers should be really, do you see?
I do, I I see, I I understand where.
And and I guess this is more directed to to my fellow board members. I, that that would be, you know, pretty the whole supposed to be relatively formal, so.
You're running a conversation, what I'm hearing is they're addressing cultural issues that are unique within people groups to, in order to try and break cultural issues that are holding them back or holding them down so that they can overcome the challenges. And traditionally, in white communities, that hasn't been the same challenge. We have different challenges. Is that, is that fair?
This might be, it's a topic that we could take up at a board retreat and talk more about it and more about your philosophy and where you as a board want to go. And Mrs. Roberts can maybe be part of that, if that's okay, Mr. Kelly. We can, we can take this topic up and have more fluid discussion about that. Is that, is that okay? All right. I'll put it on on our list. Thank you. And thank you for that, Mr. Kelly. Thank you for your honesty.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Roberts, did you want to add to the conversation? I don't want to cut you off if you, I'm sorry. She said to
The board retreat.
Put a pin in it, yeah. I mean, she didn't. Sorry. That was the Ed Kelly interpretation. Okay, anything further, Mrs. Huggins?
Um, no, no, sir. That's all for for the superintendent's update. Thank you for the time.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item five A. Ms. Bailey?
Good evening. Um, this is an action item. I'm going to read the motion that we're going to set after the um, the presentation. But the motion is to advance the school renewal plans to the uh, to the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four board meeting for consideration of the board. Um, Ms. Anita, do you have a president?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, Dr. Gare and Mrs. Roberts, that report up in Mrs. Simmons' office are going to quickly, really quickly review the district strategic and school renewal plan. Um, this is something that the board does annually. Um, I know if you have any other questions, some of you reached out. I'm grateful for that. Um, we stand ready with the associates behind me or alongside me to answer your questions, Ms. Roberts.
Um, good evening. So State Regulation forty three two sixty one requires initially developed or updates of the five-year district strategic plan and school renewal plans to be submitted to the South Carolina Department of Education at the end of April each year. We're currently in an update year for our five-year strategic plan that was previously approved by our board. So generally speaking, these plans serve two purposes. One, to provide evidence of continuous improvement. And two, to service accountability documentation that the district and all the schools are following state and federal regulations and statutes. So rather than a creation of something new, these plans attempt to document within the state's required template what we have been doing and what we plan to do. So additionally, there are funding sources that are mentioned in the plans. These reflect how action steps have been funded in the past, how they are currently being funded, or how they may be funded in the future. So when you're considering the plans and the funding sources, it is for planning purposes only. The district and schools are aware that um, GOF budgets and title, title budgets, all of that has to be approved each year. So the state plans are not meant to be any type of budgetary document. Um, as such, approving the plans in no way obligates the board or binds the district to funding or allocations. Again, it is a living document that um, provides us a way of um, well, it, a living document that will evolve and change as circumstances change, if that makes sense. Okay. So um, you actually need to go back one, sorry. Uh, during the annual update, we use data for the most recent report card to update our five-year and one-year interim goals in specific categories. You'll see those um, on the screen. We've also provided that color-coded copy um, as an overview to show you how our district and school report cards, our board goals, interim goals, and our guardrails um, actually have become the goals in the plan or strategies or action steps. So that's just an overview document for you to show the process. And go to the next. So in addition to using our most recent report card data, plans also demonstrate our compliance with other requirements. You're going to see those um, items on this slide. It's again important to note that state plans are intended to be living documents for accountability, continuous improvement. They represent a point in time this year when we reflect on last year's data in order to plan for next year. And then the last slide. So in Board Docs, we did provide a link to a folder with all district and school plan updates for your review. You'll be able to continue your review of these plans over the next two weeks um, and ask any questions you may have before they come back for your final approval at the next um, regular board meeting on April twenty ninth. The next step after local board approval is submitting the plans to the South Carolina Department of Ed, which will um, then approve the plans in late July or early August. And that basically concludes our presentation on our plans. Do you have any questions? I should say, are there any questions at this time? Because again, you do have that opportunity to continue asking questions.
I was asking this.
No. Thank you for emphasizing it's a living document and not budget restrictions.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Watley? Ms. Temple?
Just a couple of things, and I don't expect an answer right now because I know we're pressed for time. Um, just had one, several concerns, one on slide three. Um, we're talking about goals and I I'm just surprised that the goals are not stated as SMART goals because I think it's really important for us to have them as measurable goals. Because when we, when we gloss over them broadly like that, we it, we can't measure them. So maybe that's a State Department thing, but I think we should have them as SMART goals.
Ma'am, um, they are stated as SMART goals. What that document actually does is just to show you the alignment. So it basically just provides um, some of the information. That is not, those are not the complete goal, if that makes sense. You'll find those um, goals in our district plan. You'll see those in that document, and they are um, written as SMART goals. So thank you for that question and clarification. Appreciate it.
All right. And then I'm anticipating the reports for the fourth and eighth graders in science. When will we get those? Um, achievement reports for the fourth and eighth graders in science.
Um, right, we did not have that um, assessment. We, the science um, waiver is actually still in place. So they will not um, test again. Well, let me take that back. Um, it will not count for accountability for this year, so we will not um, have those scores to be able to share.
And then um, I noticed on slide four, it was mentioned that there, the district was receiving feedback from diverse stakeholders. At some point, it'd be interesting to see what the feedback was, was coming from diverse stakeholders.
Ms. Thomas?
Um, I had an opportunity to go through several of the renewal plans. Um, and some of the plans, I could actually um, hear the principal's voice um, with their um, actions and their um, indicators. And it made sense. Um, in some of the reports, um, I didn't find substance. Um, so I would like to, um, between now and the next two weeks, because it's a living document, um, Ms. Huggins, um, and the associates, uh, maybe we can spend some time talking about some of my concerns before it's turned into the State Department.
Happy to, Mrs. Robertson.
Okay. And then lastly, um, I'm not sure the calendar, but this is, this is concerning because just like the textbook adoption, we always are running up to the deadline on when it's due. And so it puts us as a board in a position of having to um, rush to make an informed decision. And so I would like that um, to see that when we develop our calendar, that we allow a little bit more time for us to um, adequately review these um, school renewal pain, um, plans.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson, for that feedback. We've, I've gotten it down here.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, I don't have any questions. Um, we're going to take a vote on this? Do I have a motion to move the um, school renewal?
I I I make a motion to advance the school renewal plans to the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four Board of, Board of Trustees meeting for consideration of the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Pass your votes.
Ms. Trudy, that should be seconded by um, Dr. Temple.
Do I have a second? And the motion passes. I hand it back to you.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Robertson, would you like to take uh, section six, since uh, Mr. Calhoun's not here?
Okay.
Okay, the Audit and Finance Committee meeting was held on April the ninth, and it was a very robust um, committee meeting. Um, thanks again to um, Mr. Prentice and his team for providing us with that um, information. The ninety-day report is going to be presented by Ms. Huggins?
We'll, we'll pass it back over to Ms. Roberts. Um, Mrs. Robertson, thank you so much. Ms. Brooks, Ms. Roberts will give a quick overview of the ninety and forty-five day average count.
So um, during Audit and Finance last week, Ms. Kathy Milney and I shared a snapshot of average daily membership, or ADM, for the current year FY twenty four ninety day. We also included comparisons to our current forty-five day and FY twenty one through FY twenty three ninety day reporting. So additionally, while the state and CCSD recognizes CE Williams as one school as a follow-up to a question during that Audit and Finance meeting, Ms. Huggins has already shared with the board the same ADM comparison for the two campuses that make up CE Williams. So overall, even though you will see some shifts in enrollment among schools across the district, um, which you usually see that information captured in the live-in attendant report that Mr. Roro and his team um, typically share. Our current FY twenty four ninety day ADM is the highest in the comparison years um, reporting period and shows very little change from what we saw on the forty-fifth day. Um, while ninety-day reporting provides us with progress monitoring and data verification, final reporting and verification completed for the one thirty-five day is actually what is utilized for funding purposes. Um, for our school, our schools and the student information team, they're actually in the process now of reporting and verifying the one thirty-five day data. Are there any questions?
Okay, we'll start questions. This is an information item. Ms. McKinnon, do you have questions? Ms. Bailey?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Kelly?
How do you end up with a fractional body? Point four three of a student, never seen that before.
So the way it works is that basically um it doesn't count like a head count, like when we're doing something like a child count or something like that. Um it actually looks at the membership. So in other words, um the attendance um or students that are enrolled, the amount of time that they're actually there.
Makes much more sense.
Any other questions?
No.
Yeah, no, I was talking to Mr. Kelly.
Oh.
Mr. Karowski?
No.
Ms. Watley?
So I was gonna ask questions along the lines of um can you explain it everyday language? Average daily membership of what that means? And is this, are these numbers um per student um a day? And what's that money used for, that kind of?
So basically, this is how the state determines how much funding we receive. Um when you think about it, you do, even though you can't have half of a, a student, like you said, um we do consider this to be very similar to what you would have with how many students are actually enrolled in a school. But it is based on the number of enrolled days um that a student is um at that particular location.
So if they're truant, the, the figures would change, or if they get transferred to another school?
If they actually leave the district or withdraw?
Or then it would? School, or is this, this does, this is just how many um students we have enrolled in CCD, CCSD at large?
Well, we actually have it broken out by school right now.
Well, that's why, and that's why I'm asking.
We haven't broken out by school now, but as, as long as they're still in the district, you're still counting that student at, just at a different location. So you might have um part of that, the student enrollment days counting at one school and the other um half or whatever counting at another school. But as long as they didn't leave the district, they would still be represented in our um, our student body or our student pool.
So I don't know, am I able to state the school name? Or is that confidential?
These are state reports.
Okay, so for exam, example, academic magnet is to saying that, that we only get $718.93 from the state for that school?
No, the um, it's not one-to-one, and um I'll be honest with you, I'm not able to tell you the exact financial information that's tied to each one of this.
Basically, like for myself, that this is the first time that I'm looking at this in, in the public. Should the public look at this? This where I'm going with it. What we're seeing is this average daily membership, which we don't know what that means, and we're seeing a list of schools with the uh columns of numbers.
I would think of it as this way, in simple terms. Think of it as enrollment.
Okay.
And um the way our funding is based, is based on the enrollment that a district has.
Okay.
And then there are special add-on funding. Maybe I shouldn't get into that, but there are um different, you know, you get different funding for a student who might be an ML student or a student who might be a student with disabilities and.
So this is basically a breakdown of the allocation from the state to each school?
This is average enrollment.
This enrollment.
Enrollment, number of students.
These are seat numbers.
Think of it as money. That, that's why I hopped in there because I, it's, it's average in, in.
Man, that's not very much money at all.
No, no.
Okay, these are actually people.
Then the fo, funding formula is a little more complex that Mr. Prentice could get into.
I think all you need to say is there's a seat, and this is the amount of time that seat is occupied.
Okay.
By a student.
That makes a lot more sense, so thank you.
Thank you for the question.
We educators, we have so much, we have so many applicants. Just a couple of comments. This is showing like four, uh four-year trends. Um I'd really be interested in seeing what the trends have been um pre-COVID to the current data. Is that, I have a sense that we've had a drop in enrollment. And then I wondered, do we um conduct exit surveys when students um the number of students change? And do we know, I, I think I heard you say that we, we do know if they're moving from one CCSD school to another. But I was also concerned that if we were losing students um to either another CCSD school or a charter school, what might be the reasons if we had an exit survey? Because I think that would inform us as to, you know, any problems that we have. Because I, I get concerned when I hear um people trying to, I would just be upfront, um people trying to form another charter school because they have a perception that we're not providing some kind of services when in fact, maybe we are or we should be. So I, I think, you know, any loss of students, we ought to know why are we losing them so that it informs us about how to make our neighborhood schools better and stronger.
So um two things that I will say. One, um this is the highest enrollment of this um, of these 90-day reports that we're showing, so from 21 to 2024, right? Um so enrollment has not decreased. I think that's a really good thing. Um the second thing I would say about that is that um while there is not necessarily a, a survey per se, there is an exit code. So um when a student leaves a school, schools do find out why the student's leaving, and that's actually um coded in our system. And we do look at those, we do look at that code. As a matter of fact, that's um how graduation rate documentation is, is done. Um and dropout reporting, um actually seven through 12.
I think the codes are good. I guess I would be looking for also, is there a qualitative statement that could be made that would inform us a little bit more?
Thank you, Dr. Temple. Are there any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question. Um I see we have a, a report, a 90, a 90-day and a 45-day report for physically being in school. But do we have a 90- and a 45-day report for those kids that are enrolled virtually?
Um those are just actually included in these numbers. If that's one of the reasons why um we support the idea of having a virtual school option because we don't lose those students to uh another um outside entity. They stay within our district. That funding stays with um CCSD as well.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Okay, I asked all my questions at Audit and Finance. So um we will now move on to the act, one action item for tonight is the purchases and um contracts greater than 250. Mr. Prentice?
Yes, ma'am. So we have the $250,000 list of contracts uh that we reviewed in the Audit and Finance Committee meeting. And of course, this evening, this is the one item that would advance to the full board for approval so that we can advance these purchases, uh which helps us get requisitions and purchase orders and everything issued before um the summer season, when a lot of these projects need to occur in schools. Um as we detailed in Audit and Finance, there are a number of these that are subject to either cooperative contracts, board exemptions, sole sources, et cetera. Um but if you see that there's either a procurement method uh where a solicitation was issued or an existing contract that's outstanding, uh those are the ones that we went through in more explicit detail, uh particularly this month, uh due to the fact that we added the three interim columns with the uh procurement director concurrence, the CFO concurrence, and the legal office concurrence. All of those contracts were sent as a package over to general counsel to review and make sure that they were also uh concurring with the method of selection and the contract language that was included. There were no issues there. I wanted to also note, as we talked about in Audit and Finance, that the contracts that are the top half of the report, uh they are ones that were explicitly reviewed. Um all of our construction contracts follow the standard AIA format, and so we have pre-negotiated terms and conditions that follow that standard uh best, industry best practice format. So those contracts are pretty quick and easy to be able to negotiate and execute whenever we move forward with major construction projects and renovations. But happy to answer any questions, and um then we're meeting in the next couple of weeks to go over a formal adjustment to this report going forward, so hope to introduce that to the Audit and Finance Committee in May.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McKinnney, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. Kelly? Mrs., Ms. Watley? Dr. Temple?
No.
Okay, so we will um table this and vote on it and.
No, we refer to the uh special meeting for action.
Right. Okay, all right, so the only other thing from Audit and Finance Committee, you may have seen the um agenda, and we had the um applications to Audit and Finance for two um additional members that was um delayed in um committee because the Audit and Finance Committee members did not receive all of the applications, so that's delayed until next month. The following um action items will move to the April 29th board meeting, the fixed cost of ownership, FY '20 budget reallocation, head start, early head start FY financial report, and the information items, the 90-day enrollment count, monthly financial report, FY SWAM and utilization plan report, the monthly capital projects report for February 2024, the ESSR update, FY '25 budget update, and the constituent pay increase. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Um Mrs. Roberson, did you want to uh allow Mr. Barrow to go over the 250 list with any detail before we go into special call?
Mr. Prentice just went over the 250K? You have a, you have a different list? Same list?
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I'm, you know what, I'm confusing fixed cost of ownership. Disregard. Okay. Ms. Watley?
Policies. Policy, you all, I'm sure have received uh in Board Docs, uh the staff has brought forward a policy that they are um asking um to include um its policy JFAB. They are asking to um and um I guess revise the policy to include uh an exception for our active military um that would allow if um, I'm gonna read it. I'll tell you what, I'll read it, and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Barrow. But it would allow uh our, our active-duty military who perhaps live in Berkeley County, um but they work at the Joint Base um off near Lambs. Um it would allow them to enroll their child perhaps at Lambs, Hunley Park, um et cetera. This is the, the, if you, you can read the entire JFAB on your own, but this is what they are proposing. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're also striking a couple of lines and revising that. Is that right, Mr. Barrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you can see the red line items where they are striking um and then adding a student in one county who resides closer to the schools in adjacent county in accordance with South Carolina Code 59-63-480. And then, so the, the portion of that, that's uh, this is uh more about is the uh active-duty military personnel. It's an opportunity to support our um military. The district will admit a limited number of out-of-county K through 12 grade students whose parent legal guardian or active-duty military personnel assigned to Joint Base Charleston to CCSD neighborhood schools. This provision does not include enrollment at magnet schools, programs, or charter schools. The district must receive written confirmation of the military personnel status, temporary duty, TDY, or permanent duty station, PDS, from an official form um from a, official from Joint Base Charleston. The confirmation should include the timeframe in which the military personnel will be stationed at the Joint Base Charleston. Enrollment approval is contingent upon space availability at the neighborhood school. If approved, the student may retain or remain enrolled at the school until the completion of the school's highest grade level. The student must reapply when matriculating to another school level for any other uh requests to change schools. Out-of-county tuition will not be assessed for the student admitted pursuant to this provision. Transportation to and from the school must be provided by the parent. If approved, the parents must submit a release from their home district. It's my understanding that this only affects 14, 14 students?
We don't have an exact count because we haven't implemented it yet, but we do not expect it to be more than a dozen or so uh individuals.
And, and when, when you brought this forward to me, you um referenced the monetary impact?
Correct, I mean, we would lose the student funding. We would not receive the student funding for that handful of students. The expectation is um it would balance out with Berkeley and Dorchester too because there are uh individuals that work, that live in our school district that are interested in going to a school in the other direction uh as a convenience to the, to the families. Uh Berkeley and Dorchester two have already implemented a plan similar to this. Uh we prefer to codify it through the, through the board policy that, so that it was official.
Okay, um when district staff approached me about it, we um did a Zoom meeting on it and discussed it. I asked numerous questions. I felt that it would be worthy to bring before the board so that we can um discuss it and take a vote on it. We either voted up or down to send it to the regular board meeting. And so with that, I'm gonna open it up to questions. Um, Ms. Roberson, I'll start with you.
Um I'm in favor of this, but we don't normally charge military families um to go to school somewhere, right?
If they're out of district, they would have fallen under a policy that they would pay.
Because they're out of district.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I'm good.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Temple?
Um, yeah. Um the question I had was um, does this mean that a student who owns real property with assessed property value will not pay tuition? I mean, I, I didn't understand.
We've had, kind of had questions about that in the past.
Vacation for that.
It's kind of an odd thing to be included in the policy.
Right, as we reviewed this policy with uh with legal, Ms. Payler recognized that the state laws were not, were not um current. And so she recommended striking those two lines out to comply with state law.
Okay, so that is.
So those changes are separate and distinct from the military clause change.
All right, so it's a new.
Uh many, our policies per SBA should be reviewed and um annually. We, we just haven't been doing it. So um that, that was something that you guys may not remember, but we, that actually has come up before in, in board discussions. Yeah, and so um, yeah, it's a good opportunity to go ahead and revise it. Um, Mr. Grabowski?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, uh my question is actually around the, the same topic Dr. Temple brought up. Is, is it that the state law has struck those provisions? Or is it that state law has changed to, to say that, that we that the, the uh better suiting, or however the phrasing was, doesn't apply anymore? But I, like, the, the better accommodations clause is the, the one I'm talking about.
I'm not sure when the state law changed, but just upon review of this document with Ms. Payler, she said that it's not so we're, we had referenced. So I don't know when it changed. It just was not in there for her, for her comment.
So we're not required, uh some theorizing here, we're not required anymore to, to accommodate for that, but it doesn't mean that we can't, right?
It means if we leave the policy the way it is, we would be violating state law.
Well, no, that, that's a different, that's a different topic. It's, so the, the policy as it was written says that we don't have to charge non-resident students, or I'm sorry, that we do have to charge non.
That we, that we may charge non-resident students and according to the we need to, do we need to revise the policy? Yes, sir, to, to comply with state law.
If I may, it looked like those were just examples, and we're just striking the examples.
We, we are.
Mr. Kelly, have you, have you reviewed that, the code that I um, I called out 56-63-40?
Nothing further.
That, that may answer your questions. Um, Ms. Bailey?
Um, I just wanted to ask the um, the reason why we are adding the active-duty military personnel is to accommodate all three districts being on the same page?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, to support the active duty and make it easier for them. Uh, Ms. McKinnney? Okay, with that, I will call for the question. The motion is to advance to the April 29th, 2024 agenda for consideration to approve the attached draft of policy JFAB for a first reading. Do you have a second?
Second.
You can put Ms. Roberson as the, the one that moved, and Ms. Bailey is the one that seconded. Thank you.
Or was it you?
And the motion passes. Mr. Kelly?
Okay.
Okay. Item eight, Ms. Trudy. Seven A? Okay. You know what, we did not, okay, we did not, when we adopted the agenda, we did not include consent items. So can we entertain a motion to move item seven A to the consent agenda?
I second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we get a concurrence vote? Any objections? Okay, no objections. Item seven A is on the consent agenda. Upcoming meetings, we have a special call board meeting that's on pause at the moment. We're gonna revisit that Board of Trustees meeting on the 29th of April. May 7, Audit and Finance, May 13, the last and final budget workshop and committee of the whole. And then 20 May for the board. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I second.
We, any objection? We are adjourned.
I said, but we're not going anywhere.
I would like to call the April 5th, 2024 Board of Trustees Special Call Meeting back in, from recess, back into public session. Do I have a motion?
I second. Yeah, you had the date wrong.
Second. All approve up.
Yep.
Any objections, no objections here, and we are back into session. The only item that is up for action is a motion to approve the list of purchases and contracts greater than 2,000, $250,000 through March 26, 2024. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.